The agenda for today, July 25th. For meeting time of 12:00 PM and we do another forum now, so I vote follows meeting to order at 12:00, 12:00 PM. Um, as we are settling in, I just want to welcome everyone here to the Budget and Finance Conference Room. Today, the committee has come together for a special meeting as we are finishing out our budget season. The FY twenty twenty six budget, so I just wanna again extend my appreciation to the Office of Management and Budget, Office of Controller, and also to Office of Legislative Council, and definitely to the Office of Legislative Services for their dedication to the FY twenty six comprehensive budget. Okay, President, Mr. Tawney, could you assist the committee with an official roll call for the verification, so we can sure they have these excuse to your heads?
Madam Chairman, this is Row Call for the Budget Finance Committee, this is pretty good damage country special meeting for July twenty nineteen thousand twenty five. It's open, yeah. Row Call, Honorable Secretary of Defense. Honorable Secretary of Defense, President Arnold Salo Arslager. President Arnold Salo Arslager, Senator Arnold Norman, and the J.
The motion by Vice Chair Crosshair, members of the committee, is there a? Second by the delegate, unless you're asking, members of the committee. Um, I'm gonna recognize delegate, Vice Chair Slater.
Chair, I'd like to defer legislation sixty-seven twenty-five to August ninth. You already said. Oh, sorry, then add one seventy-five twenty-five.
Thank you, Vice Chair Crosshair, members of the Budget and Finance Committee, we have a motion for amendment number one, which is to defer legislation sixty-seven twenty-five to the August fifth, two thousand twenty-five Budget and Finance Committee, and also to add legislation one seventy-five to five to the agenda, is there a second to that? Alright, so we have delegate, unless you're asking, thirty, the motion, delegate, I'm gonna give thirty, the motion to. Members of the committee, do we have any questions on amendment one? Alright, during this time, um, Vice Chair Crosshair, how do you vote? Vice Chair Crosshair, vote three hundred and one, uh, so okay, unless you're asking, I mean. Okay, unless you're asking. Uh, Chairman, Chairman, I recognize my right, thank you. Chairman, I recognize my right, but three, I'll get, I'm gonna indicate. Go ahead, I promise you the game votes agree, yeah. I have four members voting as affirmative, one over excuse myself not voting, the motion carries. Members of the committee, you're back from the main motion, does anyone else have any amendments to the agenda? We'll call out, I just have a question. Chairman, I recognize. Uh, yeah, so we, there's an added legislature, but here, um, do we have our, this is a sponsor, we're sponsoring.
Yeah, uh, Vice Chair, you're being sent.
You, uh, Chairman, I recognize my right, at this time, uh, I did see delegates or Vice Chairwoman, Jermaine Johnson. And she is a co-sponsor for legislation one seven five two five.
Your shot.
Uh, she just walked out, she was in her thirties here, oh, your solution then.
What's the question is?
Word of.
I just signed a document, so wanna go first, the should become, yes, please.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Vice.
Although we already did.
Oh. Well, we got under, under, two, so, Vice Chair Crosshair.
Uh, I would like to substitute our agendas. By a pending new settlement, so we will do the legislation one seventy-five twenty-five, sure, system.
Speaking of Vice Chair Crosshair, um, Mr. Taki, it's there, it's a motion for amendment two, to make new business. Go forward, so, members of the committee, is there a second to that? Thank you, Vice Chairman, I recognize my right. Members of the committee, any questions to that, and then? Great, now, the next one.
Thank you, Chair, um, I know that the. Visions were together, but is there, but how much time? I mean, I know there's some issue there, but. I don't know, Joe, is there a figure we can ask about? Oh. Or can we push this night? For what, for that, can we say on one place you think like the green and that is? Not yet. And then the, from eastern side, you know, first, rather. Calls to be, showing the budget of the eastern side, people, they have contacted the, uh, the, you see, you talk and see, that's what they want.
For the three million dollars.
Well, this, uh, legislation, this is a value.
So they're gonna do the, are you referring to the three million dollars for the planning base amount, or you referring to the one point two million for that initiation?
The situation, they, uh, they all want that or not.
That's one, that would be the one point two million to, the one point two million, apparently, is for the staff in the Navalation Veterans Administration. The three million that the committee put in the planning base amount, that's for direct services to the veterans, so which one, sorry? Which, which, uh, positive money are you going to get called about? Which one, because if, if you, I mean, I can lead up to the committee, and we're in the middle of this, the amendment two.
That, I think, is the experience concern about just the budget in general.
Yeah.
Future, something, so, gentlemen. Is they, is they, uh, as you guys forget, they have, they have, they have.
Maybe we consider that. They are working one, just they need to, they're saying that, they want to be resolved, they have, they have. Uh, the commission margin, it has to be, it's not.
You'll have to deal with it, so, not be.
Hard question.
And some time, yes, the last year, or looking over this thing.
I know, but.
Yes.
Question.
I mean, this, with my banner from yesterday.
Friday.
One of two. But, so.
No, I want to, yeah.
You have the recommendations of the.
Yeah, you can amend it right now, it's fine, you can put it in the.
Um, can you guys look through your binders, because the other thing I noticed, right, yesterday, the activist said yesterday, is your personnel, there's a, you want to, there's no two of two. So you need to check those binders to make sure. Yeah, you should check the binders to make sure that they're, or just that you have it on.
This is one of one.
One, two, and there's no two of two, yeah, there's no two of two in the binders.
The person, the form three.
And, yeah, so. There, there, we had that question yesterday, because Told did raise it, but she didn't have a response, there, as a reason, for it. It's up to you if you wanna hear it, but.
Yes, but maybe, maybe also do that, because, you know, like, we saw how they're doing on the record. So.
He could do that, yes.
Yeah.
Hi, Chairman, the committee, they're, they change the motion for amendment number two, from Vice Chair Crosshair, so anybody, Chairman, I recognize my rights, move their business before, uh, receiving reports, again, does anyone else have any questions? There was, uh, for the record, I just wanted to share with those who are online, and rather appear that there are concerns raised by the Eastern Agency and Senior Veterans Organizations. And, uh, if those, there are, uh, they don't, which is that, so, or, uh, you can call it, uh, so, um, so, unless it's concerning, isn't potentially just the other. Communities to this, to this, uh, budgetary, so, and that information could also contribute to, what about the, so, see, um, in order to, I'll understand. I agree with that, so, um, I just wanted to, yeah, but, also, you, you, Mr. Taki, for coming.
They're doing the girl holiday.
So the way they want it presented, yesterday, you, that's what I, every good, they just have, I, the summary of. So don't even call out the zero, the zero line, just the numbers.
Members of the budget, maybe, I'm running the, the, too, didn't ask any questions, I'm having. Here, now, at this time, another call, vote, uh, Vice Chair Crosshair, and vote.
Three.
Vice Chair Crosshair, vote three, delegate, unless you're asking, how do you vote?
Yeah, I vote three.
Voice, or, uh, from, delegate, unless you're asking, vote three, Chairman, I recognize my right. Delegate, Chairman, I recognize my right, so, uh, so, what we're gonna give, how do you vote?
The ones with the numbers, not the ones with zero.
So, okay, I'm gonna be gay, how do you vote? So, I'm gonna be gay, vote three, we have five members voting and affirmative, zero, but most myself not voting, the motion does carry on, number two. Members of the Budget and Finance Committee, we're back from the main motion for agenda, so anyone else want to offer any amendments or have any questions? Alright, here you go, and this time, we go back to the, on the main motion, we're not, we do have the sponsor, the legislation, this is continuing, so. Uh, members of the Budget and Finance Committee, we're gonna vote on the main motion again, that's to delete to legislation, um, sixty-seven twenty-five, um, legislation one seven five. Five, two, five, to the agenda, and make the new business go for the reports, um, so, delegate, I'm gonna be gay, how do you vote? So, okay, I'm gonna be gay, vote three, delegate, Chairman, I recognize, how do you vote? Delegate, Chairman, I recognize, vote three, Chairman, I recognize my right, and you vote, I hope, chairman, I recognize my right, so, unless you're asking, how do you vote? Unless, unless you're asking, Vice Chair Crosshair, how do you vote? Vice Chair Crosshair, I'm sorry, we have five members voting and affirmative, zero, but most, I don't know, not voting, so, which does carry on, team, so, uh, which, maybe, is in a day, I haven't met it. Members of the committee, we're gonna go over, review, review, and about journals, we do not have any journals today, so we're gonna. New business, okay, legislation one seventy-five two five. Thank you, staff, for handing out that Eastern Naval Agency Veterans Organization Resolution. Uh, for our guests that are listening today, I just want to let you all know that we do have the E-Resolution, E-N-A-B-O, eleven twenty-five, in front of the committee today. Alright, we do have legislation zero one seven five two five, for the committee, we have primary sponsor, Chairman, the, here, and also, Vice Chairman, um, Jermaine Thompson, also here today, so welcome to all the education human services, but, Mr. Taki, thank you very much, I don't know.
As best member of the Budget and Finance Committee, you have legislation, some receipt for tracking number zero one seven five dash two five. An actual link to Health Education Human Services Committee, the Budget Finance Committee, recommending approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for the Navalation, Department of Veteran Administration related matters to be included, in the Navalation FY twenty twenty-six comprehensive budget. Budget Finance Committee has final authority, or because, like, just like, she's running into the record in its entirety. For Navalation Council Rules of Order, we will not let the decision have to run into the record by voice electronic reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Taki, for sharing the status of the legislation, members of the committee, does anyone want to offer a motion? To consider legislation one seven five two five. Okay, motion, Vice Chairman, I recognize my right, we have a second.
Good.
Second by delegate, unless you're asking. I've heard the Budget and Finance Committee, of sharing our time, over to Ms. Tani Associate, and to Ms. Gabe, for the report from the Office of Management and Budget, there is no, have a copy of that report. Oh, alright, that will be report is being passed out at this time. Alright, Ms. Tani Associate, I know we've been really far on this budget, so, at the end of the, your presentation, you provide some advisement to the committee on any discrepancy that you might see, um, from any amendments or, um, the legislation itself, you ever done with the report?
Yeah.
Alright, so, members of the committee, I'm making the floor, it's hard to, Ms. Tani Associate, just, since she, the associate choosers.
Please. We got that anyway. Yeah. The right.
Yeah, Eric, Eric, and members of others in the committee, my, so, I'm sorry, um. Vice Chair, uh, Jermaine Thompson. Department of Navalation Veterans Administration. Uh, my name is Tani Associate, I'm the senior janitorist. With the Office of Management and Budget, and with me is my, uh, colleague, this, and, okay, when we're. Will be doing the overview work for Navalation Veterans Administration. There's a table of contents, we have, past A through B. Have A being the, the, the summer type. There's a total of thirteen business units. Assigned to have Navalation Veterans Administration. And I will just go here and read the grant over at the bottom, where the F I twenty-five. The grant hole is five million, six hundred seventy thousand, one hundred and eighteen. The proposed amount for the general funds is four million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine, seven dollars. There's a proprietary fund of amount of eight thousand. The judiciary fund is the two million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. Your grant will be eighteen million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five. And we also have the budget, Spanish word, to the end of May thirty-first, to May twenty-five. Then I will read the grant for the lot, the bottom, the first column is the original budget. Which is ten million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four. The revised budget amount is thirty-nine million, with thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents. The actual is ten million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. The incomers amount is ten million, one hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-two cents. The available budget amount is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred. Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eight cents, which is, and the overall, it's thirty, thirty, uh, forty-four, like, eighty-two percent. Okay, moving on, you can see, these, first and second quarter performance assessment report, for the first quarter. The average, four, zero point zero zero, which is equal to the numbers what submitted for that first quarter. Um, moving on to the second quarter performance, again, your progress of new units with an average for three point thirty-three. Which is seventy-five to ninety-nine percent. Which is also acceptable. Moving on to chapter B, has about operations that are reported, within the whole business units. With a final operation dated, adopted in two thousand twenty. Um, again, we love the, 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 statutory records of the legislation. Moving on to chapter B, conditions of appropriations, which say, concerned, again, this is really all branches, divisions, programs, that programs. In the third column. Here is listed the divisions and programs that responded to this legislative concern. Which has a due date of third quarter. Um, and status is ongoing. On the last page, we have the legislative concerns for the, um, Navalation Veterans Program, there are three. For the first, um, legislative concerns, which, uh. Uh, the Veterans Program, uh, present, and our report, so, oral, I'm gonna report to the Budget Finance Committee by the end of the third quarter. With proposed amendments to the, to the final operation, for business units ten thirty. Sixteen through seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and the due date was the third quarter, there was no response. The status is ongoing, for the second legislative concern, the Veterans Trust Fund Program, again. To present an oral report to the Budget Finance Committee by the end of the, of Y twenty-five, third quarter. With proposed amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund's plan of operation. And the business units begin the seventh thirty, thirty-one, point five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Again, the due date is third, third, there was no response from the program, again, the status is ongoing. Third quarter is the Veterans Trust Fund Housing Program, again, the program. Was to present an oral report to the Budget Finance Committee by the end of the, of Y twenty-five, third quarter. With proposed amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund Housing Plan of Operation. And this is for business unit in zero fifteen, zero four, due date third quarter, no response, and the status is ongoing. That, who's the O M B report, thank you. Thank you, um, Associate, also, thank you, Miss Associate, you have the advisement for the committee, before we get into further question on the legislation. Nathan Adam, Chair, and members of the Budget and Finance Committee, uh, yes, I use, um, uh, their innovations. Uh, for the Navalation Veterans Administration, um. So, as of yesterday, the amendments, uh, there, as we, I need to be some corrections. That I, um, that I have seen you, yesterday afternoon, we, we, budget meeting, with, um. Health and Education Services Committee. For the Veterans Trust Fund, the actual, original allocation map is eight million, one hundred, five thousand, two hundred and five. There was a business unit, seven year old, three one two six, that was amended. And with that amendment, uh, it's off the allocation amount. To eight thou, eight million, one hundred nine thousand, five hundred ninety-nine. The, 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 for the, uh, the increase in that amount. I'm gonna go to the committee, only got pointed out that there was, that the amendment being a test, that he, the Veterans Trust Fund, um, allocation, and we just caught that, so. Um, that's something for the committee to consider, to amend, or have a discussion with the, the, uh, Vice Chair today, about that. But, uh, I'm asking, Ms. Tani Associate, do you, uh, for her advice into the committee recommendations on, what she's seeing in the amendments, also the legislation. Miss Associate, are there any other, uh, recommendations you have?
Yes, Madam Chair, we, members of the, I guess, committee, uh, there's another business unit. Number in zero one five zero four, I know, it may exhibit, if I show five million, seven hundred ninety, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. The original. Allocation amount should be five million, seven hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty. So I can, uh. It's ready to see that.
Um, thank you, Ms. Tani Associate, we, uh, uh. Um, Carl, the chief of systems, O B, with, uh, taking down that information, and, uh, start drafting, and then, and, 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 actually, with, like, the, 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 but, just get that, we should, uh, paper. Um, this, so, do you have any other recommendations?
Yes, and also, in the, some of the project forums, uh, some of the forums, who is already correct. And the forums, the reviews from Department Personnel Management aren't incorrect.
Alright, so, we, all, uh, workers' office of legislative, uh, with legislative services, when we come upon that, and it would be, uh, budget parameters, are there any other tactics about? I believe that, it's, and, and, sure. Alright, we can, Associate, if we can have, uh, let's see, Cheryl, if you take a look at the budget writer, and then review that. Uh, with the recommendations, and all these, you have a copy of the budget, right, through, actually, I'm, sure. Alright, um, we could point out those discrepancies, Miss Cheryl, and to Carl, for them to take the weapon, or do that, uh. Cheryl, can you just focus on budget forms two, and budget form three, make sure that they're correct, and then, given members of the committee, having questions regarding that, make sure they're, they're, we're not, you know. Alright, so, got Carl working on those uncertainties, we got Cheryl, her, in, on, the, best, um, two and three, and we're the budget, right, is, is, you have the questions for O B.
Okay, Chairman, no, no, I need to review that, so, tell me what's going on with O B.
Alright, Ms. Tani Associate, can you, uh, just do that, your presentation regarding the Veterans Trust Fund, the, the discrepancy about, and then also, we, uh. Business unit in zero one five zero four.
Yeah, is it from the, here, is it, is it legislation, is it, yeah, the report, for you to go where.
And then, when you identify those discrepancies, did you tell us, is it the budget, right, or legislation, or, or?
Okay, we'll keep it, Madam Chair, we, the, 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 finance, and we, so, those, the, the, I can, when you, yesterday, uh, we, 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 we. Library oversight committees, for the Veterans Trust Fund. The, uh, original allocation of that amount is eight million, five hundred, ten thousand, two measures, which would be eight.
That's in the legislation, right?
That's in the legislation, but. And. Oh. So, exhibit, in the B, exhibit A.
Need to approve for that, or the, from this?
And then, Associate, that's, the original legislation, exhibit A, that's what the Veterans Trust Fund, was originally drawn to the legislation, yes.
So, after the amendment yesterday, the amendment was to change the allocated amount for business unit, seven zero three one two six. That allocated as how was reduced to one million, it's hundred, two thousand, two hundred and seven, two hundred and ninety-five. So there was a decrease.
That, that, stop, Miss Tani, so, in one second, let me just, with the, so, maybe, all on the same page, so, when you refer to the trust fund, you're referring to business unit seven zero three. One two five, seven zero three, one two six. Seven zero three, one two six, seven zero three, one two seven, seven zero three, one two eight, seven zero three, one two nine, is that correct? And that's a total sum?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted, because we're all writing everything down right now, so, that, did you just walk us through like that, when you're referring to, I just told your, um, and also, your.
You gotta figure. So, in exhibit A, for business unit, seven zero three one two six, that, uh, was correct. But from that, and then, that was found yesterday, the business unit, seven zero three one two six, was reduced. So that, the overall allocation, you're down to eight million, one hundred nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine.
So, was it just reduced from, so, the, so, the reduction you see is just from business unit seven zero three one two six? Yes, yes.
Representative.
Great, I, I'm just, I'm just having O M B describe the, the discrepancy and then we'll get into discussion on what happened. So go ahead.
So the next business unit is in the row, it's one, five, zero, four. The original allocation account is five billion, seven hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and eight. But, um, it's exhibit A. It shows five billion, seven hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and ninety four.
Associate, I see in exhibit A on the legislation, it is of the legislation for amendment. Amendment under the judiciary fund regarding in zero one five. Zero four, I have five million, seven hundred and eighty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety four. That's what I have on the original legislation, have it, Cheryl.
Can I just check here, I'm working with that.
Associate, uh, where is your original quote, quote, dollar?
The. Exhibit A that I'm looking at, I see it as. Five million, seven hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and ninety four.
Yeah, that, that's what I had too, so what is the other?
So the original allocation should be five million, seven hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and eight.
Where are you getting that number from?
I'm getting that number from the special revenue. Uh, projections that are provided by Office of the Controller. And I can provide that, uh, a copy to the committee.
Alright, sure. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Miss Tony, associate, that Senator Andrew will be coming to the Budget and Finance Committee and for those listening online who happens. Is that the Controller's Office reaches out to the statutory funds, the fiduciary, uh, funds. Uh, their, their departments and divisions to ask how much they need for the fiscal year essentially to evaluate it and then making recommendation. From this department to our, to O M B, this does not ever touch their hands of anything. But this is a recommendation between the division and then also, you know, the scene. So, um, that would be a great question to ask why those numbers don't match from the controller's recommendations to the legislation. Um, and then this will, do you have any questions?
I'm about to, excuse me, trying to figure out. Um. If there are amendments that remain up to me, and if we have. The exhibits. That reflect what was done, if many. Or if that's, um, worth coming, sure.
Uh, thank you, I'll give that to all the legislative services.
Madam Chairman, the Budget Finance Committee, the committee report is attached to the new legislation that was emailed out. In addition to that, it does have the exhibits. A, B. C, D, E, which reflect the changes that were made. In the committee report and what I agree to, um, Ms. Angela Benali is here for. Education, Human Services Committee, so she can further elaborate on the updated exhibits as well.
Okay, then the chair, I just pointed out that there's two of them. And then associate, attention to the second one.
Yep.
Alright, great. Okay, so. O B, O L C, O N, O L S. We have a second amendment that Chair and the change was going out that everyone needs to take a look at for changes. Um, we'll go back to Miss Tony, um. You have any other comments at this time for O M B?
Madam Chair, and members of the Budget Finance Committee, yes, uh, just, Dan, we keep those have, um. Recommendations as well.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, identifying business unit one, zero, three. Zero, one, five, that is the incorrect budget one two. There are columns missing for the actuals. Um. So the FY twenty six. Uh, budget form two looks, um. Incorrect. That is attached to the, um, the income.
Alright, thank you, Miss Tony, if I have, uh, Cheryl. Pay special attention to those business units. And then she's going to come back and give recommendations, so it's interesting, also so the designers stay with those budget forms. But again, we'll take a deeper closer look at budget form two, budget form three. Go back to the Budget Finance Committee, if you have any questions or, or ideas to say. Is that all of them? Yeah, yeah.
Uh, where's the student one on three, zero, one, five is. That's the only business unit that has the incorrect budget one two, right?
That's just a performance. Program performance measure.
Alright, so we're saying we are getting the budget managers' questions sorted. However, I would like to draw the attention back to the legislation. And it, there, uh, we're driving our advisors to review those, and then it's P C and make sure those are under cover. Otherwise, we'd be considering a few small amendments, uh, that are raised out. Uh, we go back to each of your questions, Rachel and Carl, sorry.
Alright, thank you, Chair. For the Western Agency, this unit where they identified from error, where is this number, you can see, or is it just with the budget?
We go to this time, associate, I identified where there was a reduction in business unit. Business unit one, zero, three, zero, one, five.
And Chair. Members of the Budget Finance Committee. Uh, when I first received the first set, I mean, of projects that amounts. Were correct. Yeah. The budget forms. Amounts were for the, for those business units. But this is very new amendment. I don't know why it was changed to this one, five, I'll see.
Where, where in the amendment are you looking?
In amendment one.
So it's that was the one, six, zero, two, two, nine, five, supposed to be.
And, and then it, one, and then, and then it two.
What's the correct number again? For Western.
So the right amount for Western is one million, two, one million, six hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and fifty three.
Yeah, um, we, we. Can I respond to that? No, we, we.
Yeah, can you write it on the board, Tonya? Especially the first one, for amendment number one.
Yeah, um, so when, when yesterday we went through the binder, uh, one of the forms had. One, six, oh, two, nine, by four. The second one, the, the form under had the other number, so we asked. The group, which is the correct number? Because they needed to be the same, um, and they came back and said, one, six, oh, two, nine. Uh, two, nine, five is the correct number, so that's why we made that amendment. We asked, uh, veterans, um, as well as, uh, O M B. So we, there was a point where we asked you, which number is it? Is it the nine, the nine by four or the two, nine, five? And they came back with the ones with the two, two, nine, five, so I don't know how you write that, that. Yes.
But you asked them and not them?
We asked both. Cause they were both here.
But you responded, did you have both of them respond or just, um?
Children. Yeah, it was just me.
So, um, thank you, our Chairwoman and. Chairwoman and, uh, Budget Finance Committee members. Um, let me tell you, yesterday, when we got here. When we got here, um. There was a staff that came from Office of President Vice President. When we were on this sedation, they dropped a second packet over. And so that's where all the different confusion happened. But in particular to this. Question that we are on now. It was confirmed through our legal counsel, Matt. Consulting with O M B. And then our, uh, Chair at the time, Lieutenant Chair, consulting with O M B. And then also, uh, staff from Veterans Administration Office. So that's how we got to amendment two. So. What you are receiving now from O M B in the detail. Budget breakdown, we did not receive that from O M B yesterday. So this document that we're talking about now, that just came to your guys' desk. That wasn't even shared with us yesterday by O M B, but this is first to, to, to my knowledge, as we just sponsored, and then even to veterans. So this is the first, so we didn't get this detailed information that the associate is doing right now, yesterday. So this is all new to us again, uh, the difference set. O C did and O M B to provide. So, um, sorry for the confusion, but again, as I stated, it was consulted with O M B and, uh, and the staff from the Department of Events. And so based off that, amendment two was done, and our legal counsel did all of that justification as well. So this, this is share with you guys, Budget Finance Committee, thank you. And this is all the. That's what, basically, the number was lost, that's. Saying that it's a different number, but we didn't get that yesterday.
I don't know what it is right now, but maybe, right, I'm not trying to, not trying to.
Cause to me, it looks like it's just the last three digits of our whole, of the raw order. That's what it looks like, so maybe.
You might just, okay, that was just two hundred five.
Five, nine, four.
You got one digit. Five. Five, one, five. Hey, this is just the beginning, we're not even into.
Uh, yes, associate.
And then Chair, members of the Budget Finance Committee, after we, as we said last week on Thursday. We sat down with Natalie Nation, veterans of the administration staff. And we provided. They allocated. Amounts to them, and we sat there for about four hours going through the budgets and explaining. What needed to be corrected. Madam Chair.
Okay. Alright, let's, uh, just take a seat, Cheryl, because we have, okay. This is, uh, just to, I, I'm having Office of Legislative Counsel figure this out, because I don't want this particular amendment, because maybe it was just a misprint, a hundred, I don't know. So I'm gonna have that, then figure that out, um, calculations are on the board today, so we'll go back to the committee, while the, uh, O L C takes a look at that, so Rachel and Carl, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Chair, just confirming right now, but. I think the only thing we need to do is update exhibit A. Like, associate, so. When you go into your budget forms for the business units, those numbers are correct, so I was like, to.
Yeah.
Just adding it up, cause. I think that's all we're going to do, and I do think because it updates this exhibit and you update. And so. And I would motion to insert the correct number, which is one million, six hundred, two thousand. And fifty four. Oh, shoot, looks like it's like a procedure, sorry.
Alright, we're, um, we're still on the O M B. Alright, we're getting that sorted, but well, see, and, uh, does appear that O M B to just correct the, so. Then we feel we can do it through the A, and then it's all assigned, so we're good. Alright, first, we've made announcements, have any questions to O M B?
Okay, appreciate it, thank you, I'm just trying to clarify, so. The numbers that O M B provided. Which business unit needs to be fixed. Or, okay. On the way to this.
Thank you, I'm gonna go to the Office of Legislative Counsel, she would help us further understand yesterday's, uh, legislative council advisement. To the P C committee and help to understand where we are today, Charles, Chris, and all.
Okay, thank you, Chair, so I sort of put, um, the O M B, and basically what, um, associate is saying is that the amendment made. Uh, um. And has the, should be sort of unlocked, excuse me, apologies, unlocked. Unlocked to reflect. It should be, um, the nine, ending nine, five, four. Versus, but ending to nine, five, so. Okay, so what happens, uh, in, I'm looking at exhibit A, the original. Legislation, and that's the nine, five, four, okay, we're good there, looking at. And exhibit B, okay, this is part of the signs, so exhibit B. Should say. One million, six hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and fifty four dollars, so exhibit B needs an amendment. Chair.
It's whatnot, so I'm. Right, I'm clear, I'm clear. Chair, and. So in unit A and in unit B, we have two. Have the original legislation, and we have the committee, um. Amendment, with an amendment one, it says, you know, there's. Just means that we're trying to do it A. And they tell everybody to do it B, so I. Just means there's, which has to do with A, and they tell everybody to do with B, so I was asking. Are we updating the committee regularly? Like, which one are we looking at right now? And then it's.
Chair, members of the committee, so I was looking at Exhibit A and Exhibit B and the original legislation. I'm gonna do it as a formal amendment rather than a technical amendment, just because there was a formal amendment done at Pessy. And so, now if that was sure, I'll go ahead and add it in, but I've decided, uh, Chair.
Okay, thank you, um, now that the numbers have been identified, I just want to commend Health Education Human Services Committee for the work that he did. I think that, um, for consistency, it's just Exhibit A doesn't, because Exhibit A is, it can be members of our national. So we're just trying to match. All right, I just said any more questions?
No, ready to move to the next question.
Okay, your number of questions are O M B. Uh, again, the, the, what was identified is that Exhibit A numbers in business unit, seven zero three one two six. And if anything, so A, and we can argue a lot of this action, but we don't want to attach those to ourselves. All right, so let's move forward, uh, Chairman, if there's a press, so this Exhibit A from Pess, an amendment.
In the binder. In the binder, yeah, what is this? I'll get to the binder, because they just dropped it off. But now I have to, because we're only talking about this one. When they're saying he's not going to.
Now let's get to the budget. All right, we went on the same page. We're now on the budget. Thank you, Associate, thank you, Mr. Dave, thank you, to the best agent colony as well, person that had mentioned. Um, O L C, you know, all of us are together to further understand where we can continue to make improvements. Again, we're going to make sure that A, that B matched the legislation. Okay, let's go to presentation, members of the Budget Finance Committee, your motion, second on legislation one seven five two five. We will go to now, um, our co-sponsor today, uh, Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson, the legislation one seven five two five.
Oh, yeah, thank, uh, good afternoon, members of the Budget Finance Committee. Uh, Chair Parish as well as uh Vice Chair, Mr. Slater, yeah, thank. Uh, we are, we have before you the Veterans Budget zero one seventy five dash twenty five. Um, I just wanna say, uh, we have, we attempted to review it last week on Thursday, Friday, or Friday, whatever date was. But um, there were a lot of issues, so we sent it back to, um. Veterans Administration, O M B, to uh get these things resolved. But I just wanna say that, um, we also uh put in a lot of energy in remaining calm yesterday. So I, I, you know, we had all eyes on Mr. Tole. And every time we saw that he was, uh, you know. He was getting a little, they were like, George, George, calm down. So we did good yesterday, and we did have a lot of, um, we did plenty of recesses yesterday. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, uh, Chair Parish for coming and assisting us for a short period of time. That was very helpful, so I thank you for that. Uh, so I'm gonna go ahead, um, and give it over, and we did, you know, make some, several amendments, and, um. We will, I'll go ahead and hand it over to the, uh, Executive Director here, Miss Bobby Baldwin. To, uh, go through a high level summary of Exhibit A, B, C, D, and E.
She just make sure, I guess, for the record, if you can identify that here, the Budget Binder does or where is improvement based on amendment pass effects. So if you, if you've updated everything, we'll just state that for that, because you don't need to go line by line with that.
Yes.
But just, uh, just a picture, because that's a third of the committee, making sure you follow that.
Can you just restate on?
Okay, thank you, um, members of the Budget Finance Committee, thank you, Vice Chairman. Uh, Jermaine Simonson for that introduction, I just wanted to say that we do respect the Oversight's. Amendments, and I just wanted to make sure that the director today is following. The, um, direction of the Health Education Human Services Committee, so I just had, uh, stated off of the microphone. That I wanted her to explain, um, where the amendments were from the Health Education Human Services Committee. And, uh, how that, that instruction was followed. So I just wanted to state that for the record, and also, um, Ms. Baldwin and also Health Education Human Services Committee. The Budget Finance Committee has asked that I read the fourth procedure in our, um. In our procedures for the budget periods for the legislations. So this procedure, I'm looking at it right now. Is very similar to all the procedures passed in the Oversight Committees, and. I don't think anyone stood out with this procedures, but this one procedure, so I'm, you know, all right, yeah. Shouldn't search. I'm gonna just email this space, and thank you, Mr. Chapi. All right, so try spending some name, Mr. Chapi, thank you. All right, um, this all been into those that are going to present today. And also to the members of the council that are here today, the Budget Finance Committee has adopted procedures. The fourth procedure states, the Oversight Committee is not required to swear in any agents or other dissenters regarding their presentations. In Naval Nation Personal Policies Manual, such as all Naval Nation employees determination first offense. For knowingly making false statements or falsifying documents. And under the Naval Nation Ethics and Government Law Act two N C subsection thirty seven forty one, through subsection thirty seven ninety three. All Naval Nation elected officials are subject to forfeiture of their elected positions and potential civil penalties. For knowingly making false statements or falsifying documents. This procedure is regarding the testimonies today on the budget, and also all testimonies given on budget support. Any oversight here, including the Key of State Committee, Health Education Human Services Committee. The Resourcing Development Committee, and also the Long Birthday, so. For the record, I want to speak that on procedure, and we'll receive that first. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Dalton, and also our co-sponsor today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Naval Nation Veterans Administration Business Unit Number ten thirty fifteen, Part Three, two thousand and one personnel expenses. Fund type one approved, original budget one million three hundred ninety two thousand seven hundred seventy one, proposed budget one million two hundred five thousand six hundred and twenty three dollars. Difference, uh, negative one hundred eighty six thousand eight hundred and forty eight. Line item three thousand, travel expenses, fund type one, approved original budget, one hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred and forty six. Proposed budget zero, difference, negative one hundred eighty one thousand eight hundred and forty six. Line item thirty five hundred, meaning spent fund type one, approved original budget ten thousand, proposed budget zero. Difference negative ten thousand, line item four thousand, supplies, fund type one. My apologies, for the Part Three, the approved original budget is one million eight hundred thirty two thousand four hundred eighty one dollars. The proposed budget is one million two hundred forty six dollars ninety seven. Apologies, one million two hundred forty six thousand ninety seven dollars, where is the difference of negative five hundred eighty six. Thousand three hundred and eighty four, for Part Four, uh, positions and vehicles, total number of positions budgeted for. O M B is twenty eight, come in, and say, and number vehicles budgeted for is come, B, eight, come, E, eight.
And do you have, uh, any more statements about your program, about, yes, you have an executive summary about last year's budget? Or you're requesting this here, and I may need more of a narrative about this.
Madam Chair, your apologies, I was working on the one hundred and ten budgets for the five thousand procedures. And I kinda had that done more important than my impact statement, but I can't email that to you.
Nothing to share, thanks for.
Yes, with regards to last year's budget and understanding the impact that we've been able to work through the comprehensive budget. The team that we have with our office assistants, our office specialists, our A N Ss and our V S Os. Did outstanding and providing the services, given that we weren't able to purchase the software we wanted to. But understanding what the accountability is being entailed and the change in the way we are managing. The trust fund call, the trust fund for the veteran, we are very pleased that in working with our commanders, our tractor veterans organization, and our veterans alike. Because we've been above the ninety percentile in the trust fund expenditures, we're also utilizing other resources in need of seeking sponsorship in events. Whether it be from county, corporation, state, or federal levels. And those partnerships are quickly driving a lot of our standouts and our resource events. And making sure that the information is being provided to the veterans to the best of our abilities with our partnerships. Uh, with regards to the, um, impact for the. Administration, I believe that we are in need, uh, uh, understanding that our A N Ss do need an increase along with our office assistants and office specialists. Because the ratio of the work per personnel to each veteran that is registered right now, which is above eight thousand. Is three hundred veterans to the assistance of one personnel. So the ratio, if we were able to provide more equitable services to the veterans. Um, by increasing our personnel, that would be one of the things that we, um, substantiated in our budgets. Uh, we understand that the, the funding is very limited, and we are appreciative for what we are able to receive. However, we do need to make sure that we are able to keep up with the demands of the veterans surviving some losses from both families. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you want us to read the additional budget, or just?
There's just an overview of your budget, we guess, I think they very long, already deal with that, they have a bunch of that about that. More about on the recognition of K for Pess to, and then understanding of your program.
Miss Mountain, big one.
I believe that concludes our presentation, if you have nothing else to add, uh, Chair, and we're, uh, Stanford, thank you.
I don't want, I don't want to breach the, so, all right, thank you, Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson. For your presentations, maybe to Ms. Baldwin, and also those here from the Naval Nation Veterans Administration, I associate. Uh, this is right here, so thanks all, Chair, members of the Budget Finance Committee, I have nothing more to question. We go first to, uh, Delegate Lustri Azzi.
Uh, Chair, thank you, good afternoon, everyone, uh, members of the Budget Finance. Uh, Naval Nation Veterans Administration, uh, what, uh, Vice, uh, uh, Vice Chair. Simonson, I, 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 your agent said, there, that was it, you asked, um. My first question, and I do feel like it's finally been on even weeks, but from yesterday. I would like to go ahead and now ask why there is a difference in the various, and also if you think it was that explanation placed this all in. Uh, right now, the, uh, Eastern Naval Agency veterans feel like they're, uh. They're not being fully accounted for as far as including with both, uh, the Blue Star and also the Blue Star recipients of, uh, this veterans administration. So why do you give a question with, um, how that we, and then they can't think about? And is some good of their numbers, which have then have received the decrease, with the exception of Central Agency, without the fine, we stand right. I mean, we know all the other agencies have seen the decrease, with the exception of Central, so maybe that's an invitation to better, thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you, Delegate Lustri Azzi, I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson and her agent. If there's any documentation you'd like to serve the committee, you're welcome to share that.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Parish, uh, though, uh, Delegate Yaz, and thank you for your questions, and we certainly had those same questions yesterday. Uh, so also had to turn it over to, um, Ms. Baldwin for response.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, uh, Madam Chair, Parish, and you know, but. Wonderful Delegate Yaz, with regards to the account, to the veterans account with, in the. Right in Naval Nation, what we are doing is we are addressing the audit, the audit findings that were established. And maintaining our connection with the corrective action plan that has been in place. And what we are doing with that is we are going back to every file and doing a physical audit on the files. To ensure that each veteran has the primary four documents required. Number one being BD two fourteen, number two being certificate of annual blood, number three, the social security card, and number four, a valid ID. A lot of times in these instances, one of the audit findings, or a common audit finding, was the fact that name spellings were incorrect. Um, so, for example, Bobby A Baldwin versus Bobby Ann Baldwin. Those documents need to be consistent, because from the auditor's perspective, those are two different individuals. So in our due diligence, and we made to me in compliance with the corrective action plan. Each of our staff members have gone through each of the files to ensure all documents are in compliance. That's the first aspect. The second aspect is knowing that we paid out individuals who were no longer, uh, eligible for this thing. So there's surviving spouses out there who have, um, been fortunate enough to move on and are no longer with the, uh. High level of surviving spouse, because they've either remarried, or they've decided to, um, have another family. So that's another aspect that we're also looking at. And then the third aspect with the veteran count is ensuring that all documentation that is on file is. What we know is going to be uploaded into a database that is online. Now, when this database is online, we're going to be able to pull that information at multiple agencies, if need be, just in case. And to, as a preventive measure, to ensure no double dipping is occurring. And again, that is part of the corrective action plan, uh, being cited under a centralized location. We do realize there is a decrease in the number of individuals who are being registered. However, I believe that is a plus, sort of, because we are noticing more and more individuals gaining their VA benefits. And, um, as many know, that could be up to four thousand dollars, if not more, per month if the veteran is the one hundred percent. This age of allowing other future veterans to partake in their trust fund dollars in the future. And thank you for your question.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baldwin, again, we have any policies, uh, in hand, I'd be very helpful to understand. Um, the process that the Naval Nation Veterans Administration has. That way, I think as delegates, we can distribute that information in addition to, uh, these questions that we receive as well. Uh, Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson, do you have any other comments?
Uh, yes, I do, uh, so if you see in our directive one, we should, we said that, um, N N V A shall also continue to increase their presence to help with registration of veteran. Surviving spouses, best or others, so that is something, uh, that we wanted, uh, the agency to do to get out more. And, um, I believe you will see that they're asking for additional vehicles as well. So we wanted, um, the agency to get out there and really assist the veterans in ensuring that their documents are aligned. And that all their documents are available, so that is something that we directly defer to be made, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson, as I go back to Delegate Lustri Azzi.
Thank you, Dan, uh, Madam Chair, uh, I do appreciate as our viewers' thoughts, Director Baldwin. Uh, one of your concerns that he's trying to give us, he has, is the show staff at the beginning of the fiscal year, or these current jobs. So they feel like, you know, we, uh, give them that opportunity to, to get all their file, to just. Um, you, when you say you have these four required forms to, to your file management, I don't think that you have personnel to go through all those files. So. The definition of a loose arm under a.
The definition of a loose arm under a ghost arm. They're all clearly identified in the policies. Because I feel. Any agencies or CEOs questioning the definition and why any individual does not receive assistance. We do, I am certain that your staff also encounters the same situations where at our veterans' peaks and we have individuals that we come up with. Asking for like all renovations and they're going to be uh. Uh ghost are under born to stars, so if all those are identified clearly in the policies in the CEOs should have really have a. Issues as far as a different reason individuals are as far as registering, then we have tried to. So I'll go ahead and uh that will be most of your own, and Chair, and I'll tell you if the if the one. That is the. Hopefully, we got this right.
Thank you, Deputy Luster Yasi, you know, who did the floor back to the Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson and perhaps. Then Chairman James to respond to the word that Hesse has been asked done. Our regulations, the policy, advice, we can get the four group to the nomination version of the administration.
To my knowledge, um we have not done any work to the definitions and the policy and I don't know if Chair James was aware of any. And so the more recent um. The more recent legislations and changes that have been proposed are by Doctor Andy Nis and you might have seen that. Um and I know he's traveled through all those CBN over the the central veterans organizations and that was. Uh to really include um ADOs and CDOs into the two title into code. And so that's the more recent legislation that a member of Hesse has proposed. And that is to my knowledge and I'll go ahead and hand it over to, I don't know, uh Chair James wants to weigh in, but I'll go ahead and um. You know, let's do that and then we'll go to the.
Uh okay, thank you, uh Vice Chair, and so with that, um I know you guys were asking about. The policies and procedures, we didn't have that discussion uh when the amendments was brought forward to us as the Health Education Human Service Committee. Um when the ARCA housing for veterans. Um was brought forth to us as a committee to make those amendments to the policies. And so at that time, we took the initial to say, okay, you know, we really need to move forward and having that discussion. On updating the policies and procedures, um but one thing that we keep running into is. I keep running into is trying to find some available dates to where all the committee members would be able to join. Uh and to do a work session with veterans department. It's been very complicated with my committee members on trying to find that available date amongst themselves to to give that full attention. To the Department of Veterans and and so they've heard me say it before on record or. Uh Hesse meetings that, you know, this is what the hindering problem is when we do work session is there's only one or two. Committee members sitting at that work session, um and then last minute. Committee members are stepping to the side and coming up with certain things that they can't show up or for whatever reason that they will provide. So that's the problem that I've been having uh with my committee members is to let you know, but it's a continuing discussion that we will uh. Eventually uh address before. Um our terms in as Council Delegates for the twenty fifth National Mission Council. It is about none of speak, oh, thank you. And then we'll send you the most recent um kind of operation that we have in baseball town, veterans.
Madam Chair, on the week, Deputy Luster, with regards to the question, first and foremost, the definitions are clearly outlined on page two of the veteran trust fund policy. The policy is on our website as well as handed out at all senior meetings with our staff being in attendance. Uh do you give a what we call a budget orientation or a budget class at the beginning of every school year? And that education is provided to the officers. We do rely heavily on the officers to convey the information to the grassroots veterans or at the post on level. And we're finding out a lot of that communication is stopping at the officer level, so we need to be more um. It's more tough on our staff to deliver the information at the grassroots or post on level if it's going to have to be this is more um. Monthly or weekly needs versus concentrating on legislative districts, that's what we are good at. Focusing our attention on how it with the second useless career. Because uh we use have evidence who can't make it to the CDO needs, transportation and issues. Or also some better do not feel welcome at their local tractor veteran organization needs. Uh case in point of being a woman veteran, that's one of the things that hindered me from attending my local tractor veterans organization meetings. It can be an uncomfortable environment or not fully accepted. So I'm sure it's not just for women and veterans, I'm sure there's other veterans out there, whether they be elderly or new veterans. Um the young veterans and ostracized for not speaking, did that was a bully. But those are some of the other a- aspects that are taken into consideration and those were, that's where our. Um efforts will be focused on as well, and yet we base. With regards to the short staff for the account, uh main special or for a D D. This is where the funding for the general funds within the ten thirty sixteen to the ten thirty. Uh sub account or the main account will be. Helpful because any veteran who is not able to register a gold star or surviving spouse who is not able to register by October one. Will still be given the same consideration for funding as those who have already registered prior capital program. So it's not to say that they'll be left out of be considered for financial assistance, thank you.
Thank you um to the sponsors, to Chairman Ben, Ben James, and also to Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson, to Miss Baldwin responding. To questions from the Budget Finance Committee, welcome Controller Kate, thank you for joining us. Um what I hear today, uh Delegate Lester Yasi is a potential legislative concern. To the nomination veterans administration, so update their plan of operation. Also to develop their communications plan to ensure that all veterans know the retired documentation to be a part of the veterans past. But other to you, uh Delegate Lester Yasi, if that uh me satisfy your legislative concerns or if you'd like to move in a different direction.
Uh Madam Chair, I have covered that. Uh you might ask me to try and make a big that outside of violation. And here also with election question, is that actually that a hard timeline of. Veterans get purge or what does that mean, because it's way to you and with that is from. Uh the membership that there's the elections and better apart. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think he's Deputy Luster Yasi, we'll go back to our sponsor and also the uh. The leader, so uh Vice Chairman.
Thank you uh for those questions again, and I'll go ahead and go to Miss Baldwin to first, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman Parish, on the cat, on the delegate Yasi, with regards to. The plan of operation you had mentioned, we are in the process of updating the plan of operation as well as an additional part. And then would be documented for the registration, the communication associated with that, we will be. Uh doing our due diligence and doing many media blasts uh preferably on every Tuesday or every week. And we'll be doing uh some outreach or some public announcements on radio, hearing goodness speech. At the year for the radio stations. With regards to the purge for the camp, uh I want to be really clear that there is no purge. To my understanding, a purge is when all documentation is destroyed and there's no record of that individual. We do not purge any document. What the veterans administration is doing is we are, we have the data or the information pertinent to a veteran surviving spouse or both their mother. And they are simply put into an inactive state. They are not considered uh part of the camp because we cannot verify the individual skill. Um living in the local area, if the individual is still a surviving spouse, if the veteran is, they have passed on. Um so those are some of the reasons why we do not put them into the camp as of right now, and that's usually done be during the fourth quarter. We also constantly. We also constantly ensure that we remind all veterans to update. Uh each of our tractor veterans organizations, I know that's been anything that is really stressed every everyone because. Quite frankly, we have quite a few veterans who changed their phone numbers quite a bit. We have a quite a few veterans who are homeless and their addresses changed quite a bit. So these are reasons why we stress to them that you have to update, you have to update, if anything changed, update. That we do uh bring that information as well, but we will be doing more uh media efforts to ensure that communication is there for registration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baldwin, Deputy Luster Yasi, uh do you have any follow up questions? All right, thank you, Deputy Luster Yasi, uh thank you, what may be helpful. Um through these lines of questions and requesting for the nomination veterans administration to provide. The number of veterans that are in inactive status um to be uh. Just so that I think that this committee and I would say is interested in this data from the uh administration at this time, so. Just a recommendation, I don't know if Hesse had that information, uh but that would be great to um have at this time because. What we can do is further uh discuss and and we'll see in the budget is how many veterans will be serviced, so that's how it's followed. Members of the budget financially, uh somebody who will actually, if you all for further questions on that session, one seven five two five.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Too much that might, so I'll try to, um. The six hundred thousand that's budgeted for. What precisely, so I know there was some confusion on that, their per agency. My understanding was that it was supposed to be for. Uh any unmet needs in terms of the. Duty assistance program to cash assistance. Yeah, something like that. And then with the amount that's budgeted, say for seven zero three one two five. One two nine, do we anticipate any unmet needs within. Each of those agency accounts? And I guess zooming in on Easter. Do they have enough to pay out what they paid out last year? Or do you think with some of the scrubbing up the list for ineligible folks or whatever? There might be enough that you figure. And with respect to operational unmet needs, do you have any? Is that in the back or? What's stood on, I guess, business by just seem like.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, so you're going to go back to Vice Chairman Jermaine Simonson. Uh to respond to their questions regarding the breakdown of. Money in business unit, one zero three zero one six, one zero three zero one seven, one zero three. Zero one eight, one zero three one, and then also one zero three zero two zero. Um you can further elaborate on those proposed budgets and also discuss with the committee or any. Vice Chairman.
Uh thank you for those questions, uh Delegate, uh Vice Chair Sider, and I'll uh so we um. You have two questions too, um I'll go ahead and turn it over to Miss Baldwin here and that is the the six hundred thousand per agency, so. Really answering the question, where is the unmet need at, we do have an unmet needs form. And the way I understand that is really uh for a lot of it is pertains to administration. Um needs, veterans administration needs, which are um you business unit number ten thirty fifteen. And that's where majority of them are at and there is uh line down there ten thirty sixteen as well and I'll let um Miss Baldwin go into detail on that.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Delegate Sider, thank you for that question. With regards to this seven zero three one two five to the seven one three one two nine accounts, those. Accounts do have into consideration five thousand one hundred and eighty one fully registered Navajo veterans. And the allocation that they receive is the eight point one million. Currently, based on the formulation, uh we take the eight point one million and divided by the five thousand nine hundred and eighty one and in fairness. Each participant is eligible to receive one thousand five hundred sixty five dollars and thirty eight cents. Um this is taken in consideration, every member of the chapter veterans organization, so to say there is an unmet need, there is um not. An unmet need, I think of the. Increase where the trust fund does go through that not can be expected to be higher. Based on the two year prior uh. The two year prior assessment of the performance of the trust funds and the investments and the way those are allocated. Uh I think every veteran or every Navajo out there would want more money and there's always um. A a space for an unmet need, but I think as as we speak right now that the hope that we have this. Um increase possibly going through, where in four percent sees. Eight percent, I think that would be more more helpful to our veterans and what they are facing with the cost of living instance. Increasing every day and especially what they are not at taking travel to VA medical appointments and to maintain groceries. And the way we have high utility bills here on Navajo. And then with regards to the unmet needs, I will have this color speak for our unmet needs um to to give me a hand here.
Hi, good afternoon, Honorable Chairman Parish, Sider Yasi. Yasi, you gave um for unmet needs within the ten thirty fifteen, we get thirty thousand in the travel expense to cover personnel. The travel for training and meeting, which is needed for me, especially for this uh. CDO meetings, out of veterans and chapters, directly impacting the service need for very two veterans and their families. We do have one for printers over um. Copyo scanner fax machines for fifty thousand and to replace those um operational, uh we are running low on our printers right now. A lot of them were purchased back four years ago, so as as it moved on, they pretty much showed. Out of um. Out of operation. And then twenty three thousand for posted carrier general, ready supplies, high efficiency computers, battery pack scanners and devices and printers. Uh scanners and um laptops are really good, especially for housing specialists out there. In order for us to do our due diligence, to do our job, especially for AMSs, uh office specials, um office A, especially if they're going to do registration, that would be changed. Um for each generation and chapter of veterans organization. We are asking for twenty five thousand for building, for athletes, for veterans standing down uh planes, equipment is the best for veterans event. Uh which we use during all of our veterans events, during our application veterans um standard and also our nationalization. And nineteen thousand. For repair and maintenance to agency office, fighting loss on brains, especially for rent for eighteen finds for our vendors at each agency. And parking, parking spots and um have a, we do have two of the. That are not. That are out, that duty replacement, twenty thousand for training for staff, the first day of the event of driving course, that's a half first aid. And to recertify our VSOs. Five thousand for ramp keeping, equipment for vendors, for more than part agency office. Replace broken, for injured piles, uh panels and operating places three years. Six hundred fifty thousand for first aid capable for staff to then activate children, patients, and safety duties. And then call me sets it in case management. Five hundred and fifty thousand by every one, five thousand to each video, hundred and fifty chapters.
Uh thank you for welcoming the sponsor presentation for one second, members of the Budget Finance Committee, I'd like to recognize the Chairman Mitch James today since birthday. Happy birthday, Chairman James.
My job, thank you. He's good. All my life.
So we do have a cake today in the Budget and Finance conference room, he was about to speak off, but I want to make sure that uh we wish. Chairman Mitch James a happy birthday, thank you for your leadership and all that you do for the nation, yeah. And I like, and I also like to say all the time that he's our only chairman on the nation, so he's a very insightful and we do appreciate you, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, members, the cake is being cut up in the faculty conference room and if you are listening or on the train. You're welcome to come by the Budget and Finance conference room to enjoy a piece of cake. It's a pretty big cake, so we need everyone to stop on back. All right, uh we're in the middle of a response that applies to that, kind of Mr. Tapi. All right, uh, we're in the middle of a response that applies to that kind of Mr. Toppie.
Um, Madam Chair, we're the budget finance committee after going to the budget finders, that there is a lot of duplicate. Documents, it isn't a budget finder, and I got the correct one from O M B, so if we can take a recess. So staff and I can quickly pull up the all the unnecessary. Duplicates, and you guys will have the correct budget forms, the correct budget that you all need.
All right, well, that's a great opportunity to recess, but I need for the record, I'm gonna ask that we get a recess in fifteen minutes to sing Chairman James's happy birthday. All the birthday, okay, we can all sing to Chairman James, ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. We're gonna take a fifteen minute recess, we're gonna come back about twelve ten.
We have the debate, we have the non-hemetic, the non-不得不得 that's gravity, and I turn Carl's side for part two in myself. So, bringing it back to the legislation one thousand five hundred and twenty five. We recessed so that the budget writers could be updated once more. And thank you to all the legislative services and O B for making those corrections. But if any members of both committees who were on questions, I think we're on. Uh. Vice Chairman Carl Sikes' question. So, Vice Chairman, did you have any follow up questions?
Uh, yeah, so. I think. Like I said before, we need more data identifying. What exactly unmet need is on an agency level from years prior? You can average it out and just look at what the last year was. So the committee of the oversight committee understands how many veterans are not able to obtain financial assistance under the veteran support policy. But. Um, like I shared at the agency governance organization. The last um update or revision to the DTF said that the money doesn't. Go back into the fund that you have to be there else to be there. And I think that's a source of money that could be used to base stuff out. Including the issue you brought up in the break where people apply toward the end of fiscal year, you know, that could still be attributed back at the end. Um. And I think the program needs to consult with the advisory council and then on agency by agency level. So to understand. Would there be support, you know, say chapters that unused funds that can only be expended for eligible recipients? But at time X in the fiscal year, there are no more applications and that goes into the large pot. Um, so that. A CBO that has people who are not able to apply and get funding, get some funding. Um, but you might have that issue where the CBO will budget a certain amount for programming or other stuff. And then that would disband their membership, giving the cash assistance. And I keep it the CBO, we don't like that, so different agencies, so. Thank you that through a little bit more this year, we're psyched we'll have additional funding for those, but it could incentivize. All the money to go over programs when people are expecting the summer funds to cover that. So those are my thoughts, and I would like to offer amendment that I think Kristen distributed. So, Brown, you could do that.
Not in terms of a bunch of fines, but this is amendment number one to legislation number zero one seven five dash two. Five, one amendment to exhibit A in the original legislation made in the following changes to exhibit A. A business giving in zero fifteen zero four slash. DTF housing program into the Missouri column delete five million seven hundred ninety three thousand seven hundred ninety four. And insert five million seven hundred and ten thousand nine hundred eighty. B update total rows in exhibit H reflect this amendment to in exhibit B in the original legislation. And that was that amendments made at Hess make the following changes to exhibit B. A in business unit seventy thirty one thirty six slash the VTF Western Agency delete one million six hundred and two thousand two hundred and ninety five. And insert one million six hundred and two thousand nine hundred fifty four into the columns as C and D update total road in exhibit B to reflect this amendment. Three directive. The non-hemetic and veterans administration shall submit revised exhibits A and B to reflect the moment above. And revise exhibit B that in in the H shall ensure that the column D is filled show the map. And has and DFC have recommended to include in the F Y twenty twenty six budget. For letter remember sustaining paragraph section exhibit as necessary perfect office of service office of council or authorized maintainable edit. Including recapping the rules related to this amendment and its exhibit. Including recapping the rules related to this amendment and its exhibit to implement the committee's intent this will supersede the consistent language of any other amendments. Which language will conform to this amendment. The veteran chambers of winter finds me that is number one, legislation number zero one seven five dash two five.
Thank you, Mr. Todd, for being an amendment number one to the director, vice chair, consider to you.
Yes.
Right, as sure as said, you're with courage, the committees are sending to the motion. Alright, so and by the way, let's see, as we get better, we let's hear as we have.
Thank you, I'm Matt, my chair, did you invite to fall in that agreement, I would also request that this will be. A exceedingly, including Zilly. Thank you, man.
Uh, thank you, let's see, as you have a back to the motion party. And so the direction across their key motion party is what, or sorry, depending on the professor. Modified motion to update the language to also update. Uh, let's give you a little bit more information, I should pass it here in the exhibit E that was dropped. Uh, the legislation I dropped, they could be had. Five dozen dollars to each C V O acts one hundred and ten chapters, but the updated. Uh, what updated does happen here? So, but, okay, um, I just found somebody didn't read these, but the request is there, I should have said.
Listen, or do you find it's how it's reflected or what are you trying to see?
But does that happen? Yeah, so originally when they had it. They put it just to one thing, just to let it just put it to there as initially, I guess. Let's see, all mentioned, sorry. See, look, this one, it would have just happened, but then they changed all the shop. But yeah, so.
Alright. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Crosshair, as we did fix that. Um, changing for this chance to make sure this is distributed to one hundred ten chapters. Okay, I should consider there's no questions in the being watching, so members of the committee back on. Uh, questions for that everyone, any questions, uh, sure, whenever you guys are ready.
Yes, appreciate it, so I just want to make sure so new exhibit A, the kind of a budget form. It was. When they serve anything. Okay, so to remove this and put a five seven ten. Uh, vice chair, later, again, can I help? Help me understand this new number, the one that you're inserting the five million seven ten thousand nine hundred eighty. Uh, where, where did you see that original information? Thank you.
Thank you, I'll go back to you, Vice Chair, browser.
Alright, thank you, telling probably, that's the. Correct number for O M D gave to us to update here.
Okay, guys.
So that's the calculation. You know, for the house. The correct calculation.
Uh, thank you, I'm just looking at my budget by your exhibit E and it looks like, um. So just help me, is this language in number two, will it reflect the change on amendment one eight? You can just help whoever see that. It does say directive. Improvising sort of eight and B to reflect the amendment above, I just want to make sure that that some of the items I would be again, thank you.
To be sure, if you have any issue, never can we drive anymore, the last question, I should have passed there.
Uh, thank you, I think in. Number two, where it says amendment to exhibit B in the original legislation, outstanding them to be, that's. Make the following changes to exhibit B ends up dating the two number. Uh, two, seven zero one. Actually, yeah. This should be from both of the. So I think that. This needs to say update A and. And we just have one number for each.
Well, that's a directive.
Wait, one thing, six of two should be.
Hey, just want to make sure.
The same.
Yeah, I think. The ones get part of it and the opposite.
In the directive, she put that.
But this just has one.
Yeah, Martin, well, I'll tell them. Well, I could ask some more questions, both of them.
Yeah, alright, we are, um, maybe the request to modify the motion, so if our good. Sure, if there are best, I can ask questions.
So, okay, appreciate it, um, appreciate everybody's kind of energy, so I'll go back to the veterans count. Um, I haven't compared the number, but the information that you provided to the committee, does it reflect the correct? Number from the Western Agency Business Unit seventy thirty one thirty six. It's, it's hard for me to determine from the veterans count what's available and does that mean in terms of actual dollars? So if, if there's a change of, right now it's about an increase, you know, just around six hundred. Dollars, I just need to know. How internally that changes, um, the eligibility or. Not the eligibility, but the distribution of dollars to the C V Os. I, I just want to understand that. Trying to understand the process that we're doing this based on the veteran count, to me, it's still not clear how we get veterans count. Number I hit X and then it equals like one point six million, I, I don't know how we get there. Um, so that would be helpful to provide that to the committee, understand getting a veteran can request different amounts. Around the year, either the high variable. But I want to go back to why the committee then wanted to make sure that we provided additional funding so that, um, you know. As we move forward with the entries count, as we acknowledge all these challenges, as we see, for example, exert agency. Proceeding over that chip, that three million dollars will be used as that buffer, um, and making sure that, uh. As we go through this kind of transition, um, that there will be no veteran. You start family, both start families that will be denied, uh, because there's not funding available. So you could just help me understand that, um, I, you know, that helped, uh. The program, you know, distribute the dollars, we were just talking in recess. The challenges when it comes to C V Os, I mean, so I just want to make sure. I understand the front end on how that money is distributed to each agency and eventually going to bring it down to every C V O. And so it will just be helpful for me to understand that while we're reading of this modification to the amendment, uh, thank you, Chair, for your messages.
Yeah, I think you should, as sure when they work that the pride vice chair across there, I send the question number two, it's all. And so the pleasures.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Paris, go ahead, shut up. Uh, Honorable Delegate Patty, with regards to your question on the counts, so. What we do is the Veterans Administration receives the allocation from the Office of the Controller, which is based on the investments. And what our job is then is to look through the agency files to ensure that we consider and count all individuals who are fully registered. In compliance with the Veterans Trust Fund Policy, now. The explanation for how we make the determination is, number one, we take the allocation in fiscal year. Twenty twenty six, our allocation was eight million one hundred ten thou- ten thousand two hundred fifty eight. Based on the oddity of all five veteran child surviving spouses and both farm mothers. Our total count was seen at five thousand one hundred and eighty one. So what we do is we take the eight point one and divide that by five thousand one hundred and eighty one. That is leaving us with a total of one thousand five hundred sixty five dollars and thirty cents per participant. Now we go back to the chapter veterans organization and we take that fifteen sixty five amount. And we multiply that by the number of membership per chapter veterans organization. Case in point, if you're looking at the documentation I have providing, uh, cornfields would be at the top, they have thirty one members. So we take that thirty one members and multiply it by the fifteen sixty five. And that's where the total of forty eight thousand five hundred thirty seven dollars comes in. So on and so forth for all one hundred and ten chapter veterans organizations. Uh, for your easy reference, the forty finance agency has a total count of one thousand twenty four members. Totalling an allocation of one million six hundred thirty one dollars, one hundred, uh, six hundred thirty one thousand one hundred thirty one dollars. And that is broken down for each of the agencies as well.
Thank you, well done, I'm going to go back to Chairman Eric.
Uh, appreciate that, understanding that I managed to come to work with what's available. Um, would your team, would you or your team know what would be the maximum amount? Of veteran could request throughout a fiscal year minus the variable assistance, so I know there's a few for months. Um, what I would like to start aging since the veterans are having a conversation of increasing their status size. Remember our committees, who are controller, delegate, uh, this is how I see myself, the committee, um, we checked it out. Understand then, estimate how that moves forward, but I would like to know what is the max, um, every veteran. Uh, could possibly, uh, apply for minus the variable, because that's, that's a variable. Um, and I would like to look at then with our current veterans, you know. Plus or minus a few percentage points to make sure that we have a better idea of how much. We need to meet, um, the veterans needs and. So, so let me ask that first when I have the second part of that question, uh, sure, sure, sure.
I think he should remember best or try you, this year, so you're, I hope that's what you've heard of the agents, alright, it's well done.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Paris, I'd like to hand on a shuttle for your question with regards to your. Um, what is the total possible amount an individual can require based on the trust fund policy is we have. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And this is taken into consideration, two hardship assistances each at four hundred, two interview assistants each at four hundred. Home improvement at one thousand, VA medical appointment at one fifty, traditional ceiling at four hundred, workshop. Attendance from one hundred and education at five hundred. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, as well, then, I'm going to go back to Chairman Eric, my friend.
Just, you know, being like, um, Chair Slater, you're right. Um, I'm just asking questions, I was recalling up those, the requests for the set aside for veterans president. So appreciate that, um, does your team is open, uh, to these, is there actual veterans that receive that max amount? Um, what we're trying to look at is. If the veterans are requesting additional dollars, we've had a conversation about the amount of. Funding that's in the trust fund housing account, and so I'm looking at, you know, the O R P report. And this year, again, on all the efforts, it's still at a very low expenditure rate of thirty five thousand, I mean, thirty five percent, you know, of your work. Because it is the state expenditure. So I do see that the C V Os are able to expand their dollars. But the second part of the trust fund, the loan program and the household, they're very low expenditure rate. And so, um, I'm going to ask the controllers in the right, uh, controller, this is Ellen. Where I saw as a delegate over to the finance is asking, um, if Jeremy. Jimmy, or Jimmy, Jimmy.
Chairman.
Jeremy Jim.
If J J, um. If, uh, the, as I mentioned, there's forty million dollars in the housing. There's no real like policy or how to move forward, I wanted to have a collective conversation to say. At what point then do we ask the veterans to freeze? Um, distributing funding into housing until all of that, there's a catch up, right, with loyalty holders. Because we've already invested, we already paid money managers, so this is your income, this is your interest income, but you're still sitting on. From quite. A hearty amount. And that could be why people will, if you look at instead of taking. Like, it's always, you know, it's hard to take, then it's payback, but if there's a plan to be positive. And see how long it'll take the program to catch up. Because we have about five, so every year you're getting, I don't know, five million dollars. You're about, you're about seven years, you accumulated seven years worth of funding, so I think the committee should probably oversight. Okay, so, so you probably, well, that's better than, okay, so I don't know if that's going to be under the direct nature, but if I'm not giving some suggestions to the controller. Like, if, if we can maximize, give you more funding. To the veterans and possibly the housing distribution department, then I can really offer to a lot of veterans to maximize. Because right now, because of that eight point one million, I didn't write it down, but it sounded like the. The average is thirteen hundred, would you say, the average, uh, veterans sees? So thirteen hundred, so right now the average is thirteen hundred, their max is. Um, thirty seven hundred, and it sounds like that's, they want to go in that direction. But we would have to do, we would have to make some hard decisions and talk about the housing. And if, if we need to create like a five year plan, because, uh, one deposit and your program is able then. Have access to those dollars, so nothing, um, hopefully it's not, um, disruptive, but it also meets the needs of the veterans. I'll figure out what is, what is the best amount to meet, um, our current veterans here, because I'm not sure if you have a venture for. Veteran already able to maximize that amount, or is the policy in the future. Going to just be a base amount, like two thousand for a veteran, uh, which I think. Sounds more reasonable, because every time you do that two hardship. I found it one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's nine checks for veteran. So that's also the heavy load on our system, where we could consider either one or by annual distribution. And, and we forget those two, at least three thousand, there's not, you're not to be on my head. If we're not there yet, that's fine, but I've been thinking about this a lot, because I want to make sure, um. Their needs are covered, but you read some calls and knowing that they're sitting on forty million, that's already good. You know, that's it, and is available to those, so. Chair, we continue to have those conversations, as a committee, if you want to have one leadership conversations, but we do. Uh, work with Dr. Andy Nez. We have, um, resolutions, I know they keep them going by percentages, and it's not clear. So much like the intent, just know that you need access to more funding. And so I think there's going to be maybe, I would like to be. At least three or four options to be considered, and then continue to have the dialogue. As we see in the future, our things are declining, um, you know, we have higher patient fund, we have other, um, fronts that are, are. Being requested, and, uh, and the seniors launched, uh, last Monday for issues in this too, what we hear from our. Public, um, hearing reports, we'll, we'll hear that, but the community was asking for, they did ask the center, he's continuing to support. The veterans, you have a lot of support from the community out there, I think it's just us. From the community out there, I think it's just us understanding all the dynamics, so appreciate it. Uh oh, and then I will say, um, I'm not sorry to commit reunion, so I asked my little chat G P T like. Okay, so for example, and I hope that it can be this to the veterans or or P I O quotes.
Mm-hmm.
Is what budget and finance was able to do. Because we've heard that veterans, you know, some veterans were not getting their allocation, so for example. At the agency level, like for Eastern, so I think it was Eastern, so I just asked, what's the percentage increase from thirteen thousand? Four hundred thousand, you know, that's a, that's almost a three thousand, oh, three thousand percent increase.
Hmm.
And so there's definitely support from the committee and the council to help with the needs of our veterans. Um I understand what policy really change, what are some of the concerns, and then how to move forward, and at what point? Will we get to that base amount for each veteran, full star family or uh new star family, I think you're. I do, okay, I see there's some questions. It was like, I believe nine checks per veteran, that's a, that's a. Yeah, it costs like fifty dollars to see the. Yeah, yeah. That's a pretty quick increase. Thousand nine hundred and seventy-six percent increase. Yes, yes, that's what we need our K I O to keep saying that, but. So like, besides that, it's concerning, we're, we're supplementing that.
So you only pick that communication.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that.
I might have cut down, sorry. But also the flip side. Look at the side.
Requested by the members of the finance committee, also listed council has. Uh sent out the updated terrible uh request from. Uh any chairman has provided requested uh include, make sure that are consistent on the exhibits, so very sharing files there. And that Mr. Tommy, create that aloud, and then I'll ask you for that application, Mr. Tommy.
Amendment term is the budget finance committee, this is amendment number one revised into legislation number zero one seven five dash two five. One amendment to exhibit A in the original legislation, make the following changes to A. A business unit in zero one fifty-four. B T F housing program, the judiciary columns, delete five million seven hundred ninety-three. Seven hundred ninety-four and insert five million seven hundred ten thousand nine hundred eighty, B business unit seventy thirty-one thirty-six, E two F Western Agency, delete. One million six hundred two thousand two hundred ninety-five and insert one million six hundred two thousand nine hundred fifty-four. C, total columns and exhibit A to reflect this amendment to. Amendment to exhibit B, the original legislation that was standing, that has made the following changes to B. At business unit seventy thirty-one thirty-six, B T F Western Agency, delete one million six hundred and two two hundred ninety-five thousand and insert. One million six hundred two nine hundred fifty-four and to column C and D. In business unit in zero one fifty oh four. B T F the housing program, delete five million seven hundred ninety-three seven ninety-four and insert five million seven hundred ten nine hundred eighty into column C and D. Updates rows in B to reflect amendment three. Directive, the N and B A shall submit revises of A and B to reflect the amendment above the revised edition. And then N and B A shall ensure that the column B is still to show the amounts at Hess and B and H have been recommended in. To include in the F R two hundred and six budget for remember legislation in paragraph sections and exhibits, as the center is located. The office of legislative service, the middle of the council, are offered by executive editor, edit, and calculate totals related to this amendment and exhibit can come in the communities and text. This amendment suffices as assistant language in command, the amendments will single so we can host this amendment. But a chairman is a budget finance case, that is running number one revised right into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, for the record, and Vice Chairman Crosshair concurs. And Mr. Tommy, please, the second.
Yes.
Alright, unless you have to be confirmed.
Sure.
Thank you, unless you're asking, first to the budget finance committee, does anyone else have any questions on amendment number? Chair, Chairman, if you're concerned, but.
Oh, yeah, thank you, they're told we're doing a cleanup amendment, um, sound, I look that, um, I guess I'll say as a half term. Or help me, um, under business unit ten thirty fifteen, uh national veterans administration. I've only seen one page of budget form three, so let's say eight, one and two, I just need to make sure. Here's twenty-eight conditions, but on this page, there's only twenty-six, there's your verify if um that's not law. Uh if, if you have that, it's easily put into the higher than staff, this check, if you're super, it's full time, there's twenty-eight, eight, and then there's vacant ten forty-four. But I do see the budget, it's, it's there. I guess, for all your, for your friends.
The uh registered presser, I agree the, the motion to this amount of, I don't know, to. Um this all been, and uh so to our agents, here's your response to the question, right? All that is, is ten, three, four, I. Really think all the stickers off, it's making a heavy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I cannot manage other questions regarding the, the trust fund policy. Um one of the things that we are doing, uh aside from updating our plan of operation, is updating the trust fund policy. And the trust fund policy is currently um very cumbersome, and it's very hard to understand for our grassroots veterans. We do not uh break a lot of policies or guidelines on a daily basis, though we're simplifying that. And in an attempt to do that, we're hoping to move to an annual payment for each of the veterans to. Where they don't have to worry about constantly applying, you don't spend fifty dollars for checks that's being printed. Somewhat going towards an annual payment will help to alleviate a lot of the confusion and. The redundancy of the people status being done. Uh with regards to that, we would like for our trust fund policy to mirror that of what the allocation formulas are. Case in point, I would give an example that with this budget, with this fiscal year, the amount of. Um one thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars per veteran would mirror what is in the trust fund policy. In the event, in future years, let's say, the stock market performs very well. We can just automatically assume, okay, well, this is what the trust fund policy allocation will be this year, veterans get more money. The following year, maybe it doesn't do so well, it'll be less, but the policy will mirror that of how the stock market performs, alleviating more confusion. Um with regards to that also is, when we are working with these trust fund policies, uh we want to keep in mind. We're always asking, our, our veterans always need more funding. But we're seeing, as you've seen in the numbers, that it's a decline from eight thousand to five thousand. But we attribute some of that to the fact that some veterans are now receiving one hundred percent VA disability, and they don't feel the need to come in and apply for the trust fund. And I think that's great, I think that's really good that our veterans are utilizing those services. It allows more opportunities for other individuals who may be in not so great situations to come and start taking the funding. So in the future, I, we envision seeing that this program may need financial uh or income guidelines. Maybe that may be another uh scenario we need to take into consideration. Because quite often, if we take a look at our role, we can clearly indicate, and we know who the regulars are on an annual basis. Those are the ones who take a bigger chunk of the pie and leaving out. Our fellow veterans out there who are out with, off, living off the grid, sort of, so, and who don't have that same opportunity. Because they don't have transportation, or they don't have uh access to this information readily available to them. Though taking into account income guidelines may be more beneficial in this instance, because I don't see that. It is fair that a veteran who's receiving four thousand dollars a month from VA disability would also be able to draw this three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That, to me, that's just not fair when the funding can go to help other individuals who don't have a steady source of income or assistance coming in to them on a monthly basis. So uh that concludes my response, thank you, Shada.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Holden, I heard from the budget and finance committee, there's a request for age two or budget form three. An office of legislative services, work with the veterans association to track down that second page, and it appears that all bills and positions are budgeted at. I mean, it is a ten whole vacant positions, alright, ten forty-four. Uh Chairman, if you have any questions, we'll.
Uh no, I just want to thank the committee, I think, um, I know the long way coming, the veterans administration. Budget, uh they have asked staff just to provide a high-level summary of. You know, what was the delay in getting your budget, um, before the oversight committees, we will do a little bit of, um. Uh diversity on our end, and just see how we could um make sure that uh the veterans budget is supported through the process. I was really stressed out last week, because our budget calendar, you know, technically was on Friday, and so I'm looking at the committee. Uh today for, for Shovin Up and Hess yesterday, I think they started giving on Friday, according to the conversation, and. We're on Thursday, and so I just want to make sure that uh we're both, we're trying to get onto a two-year budget. And so I think if we start looking at how to start, you know, looking at these numbers, or maybe looking at last year's numbers, so we're not projecting. And it may enhance that the veterans know ahead of time what the allocation will be, so that. You know, everybody, you know, their status is clear, it's transparent, and nobody feels like they're left out, like by kind of a bit of trauma. Or individuals who feel like their voice is not heard, helps best to give them all the information, so we hope to look forward, um. I hope, you know, working together on how we can convey some of this more technical information for our veterans who are interested in how this actually works out. And um Chair, who is helping, my chair, it already came every month and provide that last report, that was very helpful. I looked for one, this one, I haven't seen one, but the veterans, because when you print it, uh it basically, it'd be like a one pager. The, the second page is like all the different, um. You know, are, are different shocks whatnot, and I do know that the veterans want to have a conversation about the impact of veterans trust fund and the gaming, um, loan. And so like, you know, I've been criticized, like we're moving the gaming loan and not. Any other makes it a better, not how that impacts uh their rate of return or the rate of, of investment. And so I, I just hope we'll try to do our best to give you that information. And so the forward work will be very big.
Yeah, I think you should, the chairman, the workness, or right, we're the committee, thank you for your input and insight and discussion on. Amendment number one, and also the legislation, members of the committee, are there any more questions on amendment one? Okay, here now, this time, I, um, I'm gonna go tell those, so, delegate army, the gay, votes green. Uh delegate, surely not, yeah, so, so, sure, nothing goes green, chairman, the workness, are ready, I mean, vote five group. Chairman, the workness, are ready, votes green, and delegate, unless you're, I think, how you work.
I'm charged with.
The other, unless you're, I suppose, green, and vice chairman, pressing for you. Vice chairman, pressing, you're on screen, we have five members voting, I'm throwing in zero, pose myself not voting. So the motion does carry on, I'm number one. Members of the budget finance committee, does anyone else have any questions, so the division one, seven, five, two, five. More questions, alright, so I heard a get from this side and uh him on this side, so vice chair, is this a follow-up?
Yes.
Alright, we go to the follow-up information process, and my go to element, Sharon, I see, so the mayor's here, I'll say.
Thank you, so I, I mentioned how. In the, most of the subjects about trust fund policy, at the very bottom, uh. My, and we discussed this at Central Agency, Veterans Organization, we did. So I just read from page four or five. The annual appropriation authorized above shall not expire, and any existing funds shall not lease, sorry, shall not lapse back into trust fund. Carryover balances shall be redistributed consistent with paragraph one B above, and shall continue to be expended for the point of matter purposes. For which they were appropriate, funds obligated for projects described in section one seventy-two of the chapter shall not be allocated, children available for their designated purpose. So. When you open this up, there's no carryover or inclusion of prior year balances. So to O C and O D, why is that not a part of it?
Thank you, little question, we're also, I'm going to go back to Ms. Tanya Soski and Ms. Alden Collins and Ms. Don Bell. To. Respond to the question by Vice Chairman, I said. And after you have the chair and members of this budget, and that's me, um, I was like. Please turn over the question to our conservative director, or, um, yes.
Oh, Madam Chair, members of budget finance committee, and all honesty, I don't know. And here's that list of us, I'm old, we're not aware either specifically what, and, and it is. So all I can do is just say, look into it. And provide a response.
Um, sir, we all, in regards to the comprehensive budget, if O B is looking into this. Uh I'd like to request that you all provide a response back to budget finance and health, health education, human services committee regarding the carryover. And potentially the impact of the fact to this budget. Alright, go through that, okay, thank you, Mr. Bell, um, Vice Chairman, we're just going to work that all C, the word out that directed, so we have a tiny break, and that's to that directive. Uh that way we can all work fairly, because we can potentially work in this serious budget, if we just don't know what's inside, right? And the response from O C and O S, so that is a question.
Thank you.
Time of outside of this legislation that could potentially impact the way we're producing the comprehensive budget, so. Um to education, human services, we'll work on that directive outside of the legislation, and then hopefully we can see that. Alright, alright, um, we're going to, surely have the option.
Thank you for this time and everybody for being here, um, and if you want to say thank you for the report, um. I think this is the first one I've seen members of veterans. Um I did a ten, uh workshop or training a couple of months ago, and I know at that time. Um the individual who came in headset that you were really trying to look at, you know, your data information. And, and so this is something that I'm going to review, and I will, um, have like this question about, and also you, uh, you know, but. Um, some other questions I have on are just like the future planning in your data, because somehow you're going to use this information for long-term planning. That includes the housing, healthcare, um, access, and any kind of coordination with the veterans. Um, the other one is, I wanted to really know, uh, as well, on mental health of our veterans, how is your office coordinated? With behavioral health services from veterans, suicide prevention, or P T S D services, because I know you outlined some of those. Um, different services that the veterans can apply for, but on the other side, how much of that other stuff, mental health, are you also working on? Um, but only because I know, working with the Dine Action Plan, um, and with. The group that I'm working with, the task group is the suicide prevention, and depending on which group. And whose members you look at, the number, the who's, who's successful, I don't know, it's successful, those that are committing suicide, they're. Different groups, and one of the things that I saw in our report was from the state of Arizona, they say. That the highest, um, suicide or native in Arizona is gonna be our veterans. And so I don't know if we're, which, um, reports you're using, how. You know, how you're accessing that information to make sure we're targeting, you know, really working on, you know, things for our, our, our veterans, but. The services that we provide for housing, I don't really know if it's addressing any of this other, you know, for mental health. So, um, what I wanted to do is, uh, put some questions together, uh, so you'll follow up better, um, so that we can talk some more, I think. I think, you know, we need to be targeting and working on this too, I don't know if we really are, I think we're just kind of smashing the surface. But that would be my question, my comment, thank you. That's a good question, I think, um, if it's something we're looking at for data for the future, maybe I can view a directive of it. Yeah, we're gonna use it for data in long-term writing, like all the others, that would be helpful, so.
We're gonna make sure we're legislative concerns for the second quarter, so it gives them time to evaluate their budget, asking utilizing in. In, um, collaboration with the Department of Health, give that their back to H E, and then, and then allow them to evaluate the services, and then. For, then they can make a recommendation on a budget draft. Thank you, Governor, Sharon, I see, um. I think it's really critical when we can attach, um, these services that we can identify. In our communities, these social ills that we have, but tied into data, and then tie them to a dollar amount, they can help with these services, so. Uh, so like, sure, we have, we can work on legislative concerns, who are good, the Health Education Human Services Committee, to get that report. Uh, that way, we can start collecting that data internally as an application, and then help identify, uh. Potentially what that could look like in next year's budget, but that'd be very helpful, information, um, the show, you ask, it will work. Uh, but so, it shows, you have any specific questions in the budget statement? No, alright, thank you, other show, now, you, the work on a legislative concern, that's your topic. Um, I share, so you can hear that, all question.
Uh, I guess, question, we could. So, I guess, to me. Am I supposed to be there? Ever since that policy was adopted, um, it is one existent where, if you want to use for, I suspect money is at the age of two double. Were gonna be allocated for agencies or individual veterans who were not able to obtain assistance. Which contemplated in that legislation. Or resolution, but. We wanna pass this today as is. Where, was everyone's like comfort.
Anyone else?
I, I don't, I think it's kind of in order, like, it is, okay, this amount, but there should be a carryover, and I'm just gonna, or stated there, and it's got a counter, you know. If there were carryovers in past years, will they revert it to the trust fund, or they sit it somewhere else, and they're receiving. Sean must be back, so.
Wouldn't it be charity? Wouldn't it be charity?
Yeah.
Both would know, because Robert is like, people are like, oh, what's sitting there in the past, and then. You can have the question, and see how.
Uh, Mr. Willie, I've read earlier, I've diverted a section of the Veterans Trust Fund Policy. That says, uh, the monies are not supposed to expire each year, we find it. The annual appropriate, the annual appropriation authorized above shall not expire, and any unextended funds shall not last back into the trust fund. Carryover balances shall be redistributed consistent with paragraph one B. Above, shall continue to be expended for the programmatic purposes for which they were appropriated. But, the last few, uh, N B A budgets that we have approved, didn't include those carryover balances. Or documented in any way, so. What is O C's understanding of, um, where that money's at?
Mr. Willie, directed by, the question.
Um, so this is the regular Veterans Trust Fund, correct?
Yeah, that has it.
Okay, so, I know in the past there were questions about it being a carryover and not being a carryover. Um, somewhere along the way, I believe it was authorized to be a carryover, I'm not sure how the program, um. Gets the budgets back into those line items, I don't know if the, the numbers just carry over in the perfect, in the, in the correct object codes. That they were at the end of the year, that process, I'm not sure of, but if they're not lapsing, then. The money actually moves over from one fiscal year to another, and it doesn't get calculated as part of the principle. But I think that's kind of what that legislation was, I'm trying to figure out which legislation changed that in the past, because that used to be a question. Whether they could actually do a carryover or not, and I believe the answer was no, but somewhere along the way, I think there was a resolution that changed that. That, I need to find that resolution, but as far as the process, it does get carried over, the process for how it gets into the budget the next year. I don't know how that happens, it should actually go to oversight to put it back in the right object codes, to me. Um, or it should be part of the carryover calculation, and then the budgets get uploaded that way, like the normal general fund ones usually do, but this is a trust fund. So I hope that helps answer the question, I still need to find the resolutions to authorize that carryover, and then I can go from there. Um, as far as the process, I guess O M B would need to, um, answer that part, because they're the ones that actually put the budget in. Thank you, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any of the questions, too, if you have them.
Really, the resolution number C J Y seventy twenty-three. And. So that's C J Y seventy twenty-three, um, again. Maybe the question is, is that you can identify the dollars in F I twenty-four, to F I twenty-five. To now propose F I twenty-six of that carryover. This, this wasn't taken by, so it didn't happen in five years, but, but.
We didn't get the carryover in twenty-four.
Yeah, so it'd be twenty-four, twenty-five, and now twenty-six. So, Mr. Willie, did you identify that in the, in our big balance sheet of, uh, here, of our comprehensive budget for F I twenty-four, to F I. Twenty-five, and Mr. McCade did a budget to act, so, that was, uh, current, cell sheet, I was pulled up, so Mr. McCade. Definitely when, on what we're discussing, my share process later has identified a. Carryover clause in the Veterans Trust Fund, so, in this year's proposed budget for F I twenty-six, we don't see that in the object code. But we're asking the opposite, the controllers identified monies in F I twenty-four or F I twenty-five. That were carried over previously, or were that money just sitting unallocated? So, Mr. Willie, what?
What would be the fund down?
The twenty-one? Well, and then you know, the big, but it was without that.
Is he following it now?
Mr. Willie, are you looking into that right now?
We started to work with the resolution.
Okay, and, and so that goes back to Vice Chair Carl Siders' question regarding, um, supplemental assistance is to the veterans. Members of the Budget Finance Committee, uh, the question back to you all is whether we approve this legislation as is. Or pass further directives to take consideration to the additional money that is sitting, um, unallocated to the Veterans Trust Fund, so. What are your thoughts to that? And, so how many services? So they're just wait until that down comes back, or, this question. I kind of go with the, to buy a premium, so it's more, we need to address that. But, my church, we're gonna make this, look at this before, as long as they get these people, it's, it's like, it would be bad, of course, so I don't know.
Refer back to the best. Well, I mean, I guess I would want their, like, restimational, spend the months.
I'm just, yeah, they're, it's, yeah, I'm sure, it doesn't work, but there's a lot, for trust fund. You put type, yeah, you, they don't obviously have a, like, the, the, yeah. Like, I guess that's a question, how, what do you estimate right now, at the end of July, you have remaining in Veterans Trust Fund, because it's just Veterans Trust Fund, right, it's not the health. Or health has the same. Okay, but it keeps going, but we don't, we don't approve that through the budget, it just says it.
No, the only thing that matters is carryovers, like, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, like, she, like, how much is left, you know, how much is left over there?
For this, this year, I'm fully not in commission right now.
Yeah, because I want to get off the gentleman, we're just using gentleman, right, on the stuff, yeah.
You refer back to.
You can table it, in your final, then invite them to a joint work session.
We do joint work session.
Well, I think there's gonna be a lot of them.
Are you guys gonna be next to us?
No, we're meeting till the eleventh, our next meeting, so August eleventh, or eight.
Or.
Hey, hey, Perry?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
So I looked in, um, Veterans Trust Fund in all those accounts, and there's no. Amounts in the carryover line item, so it doesn't look like there's anything carried over from twenty-four to twenty-five, and you said this had started in twenty-three?
It wa, it was signed into law in two thousand, calendar year two thousand twenty-three, so it wouldn't take affections on F I twenty-four.
Okay, uh, let me check the twenty-four ones also, too.
So that was carried over to twenty-five. But I don't know what's left in the trust, like, the, the, right, that's what you're saying.
It either has to be available, or like. Well, this is saying, uh, the, the word it says, it doesn't lapse back into, so Shovna lasts back into the trust fund. So maybe O O C will help record, and how much lasts. So, there's, there's nothing, you know, that, that's what you're trying to get at, okay, okay.
Okay, Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
I don't see anything carried over from twenty-three to twenty-four, or twenty-four to twenty-five, so if that is true, then. Whatever balance was sitting in there did, um, lapse. And I'd have to go back into those years and find out what the cal, the amount was at the end of the year. Uh, to find out how much did lapse. Um, I, uh, first thing I'm gonna do is read that resolution, and then I'll recalculate those numbers for those years, and then I can get back with you on that. But I, it's not gonna be, I can see if I can try to get it done before five o'clock today, um, but it's gonna take a little bit of time, at least there's only five accounts, though.
We can table it, and then do a meeting with them. The only thing I think about is, the only thing internal on O M B side that I'm concerned about is the unmet needs, if the unmet needs don't change. The unmet needs will be the same, and then we can have a discussion about that addition. But that's, I'm pleased with that, by the way, in this budget, I'm not too concerned about, the difference in funding place, I think that, that moving resolve and that is. Um, because they have their budget forms mostly ready, I'd say ninety-eight percent, which is one's federation, um. I, I, I think it's okay to table the suggestion, and have a meeting with H E. Um, I think it may take like an hour, but all the information's ready, it's just basically all this coming to a consensus, like, what funding source it was from, does. And I would think that it would be the primary, what's left over at the Veterans Trust Fund, and then supplemented by the general. That's how I think that it would be, but I don't know what you all. But I don't know.
Because there's the one that overshot.
You just have to find it.
Yeah, we just have to find that problem, can.
I just have a question, so for that resolution, if it's a carryover, where does that, where does that go back? We go back, Sean.
Um, uh, Mr. McCade, this resolution here, if, if it lapses, where does it go back on our down sheets?
U F D. Or, actually to the, to the principal.
Well, in the, in the resolution, it says it doesn't go back to the.
Does it go to?
Does it go back to the principal?
So it would be their fund down.
Yeah.
Unallocated fund down.
Unallocated fund down.
Maybe, the many guys that know that is the first one, so you put it in the journal.
Were you gonna put in the U F D, I don't know. Delay is the audit now? Alright, I don't know what you all think about this, do you, do you want to see it?
Me, I do, because I went to the, they met.
Norman? Norman? The right table?
Yeah.
I mean, we can schedule our meeting, our meeting of H E, like, Monday, next week. Oh, that's the fourth, it can be built on, fourth?
I'll get there for thirty minutes. While we have it before, uh.
But then, fine.
You know. I don't know, but there's some, come to a test, you mean, or.
The next regular meeting was on the eleven, Monday, August eleven.
Do you know what their schedule is like, could they be flexible for a leadership meeting on Tuesday to discuss this?
Um, they, um, they don't meet on first week of the month, because they're after their community meetings, or the chapters, and. Um, so I don't know that, we can set what we're gonna be available for, but if you have a work session, it's just a leadership meeting, okay, then you know, you know.
And next week is ten.
Or we can have a leadership.
Yeah, leadership. Nobody can show.
Are you all?
Norma? We call.
Our process is a very session on Fridays.
I'm gonna stop by now.
Sure, what?
The day before, I want to.
So, alright, so, let's do a leadership meeting on, are you gonna be ready by Friday?
I am ready, you should have heard the meeting with the tax commission. I am ready, you should have heard the meeting with the tax commission. They haven't even read the legislation and that piece of sending it. They haven't done any research, it seems like, on what the solar is, I don't know why they're already. It's nine to like one or something.
But, okay, it's my proposal, if we do table that, we're gonna have a leadership meeting on Friday. With Hesse on virtual, if they initially want to.
First, this Friday, yeah, two days, and three, for three days.
The session will now be on that.
His legislation.
Yeah, and then we've got a.
All right.
I mean, I, I didn't do ninety numbers, I thought you.
So, so Thursday, my calendar is working on Thursday.
Thursday at one.
Thursday.
Can we reset? You need to know something, maybe fifteen hundred minutes.
How long is we gonna take it to pull the numbers? This, what we're talking about? Thirty minutes?
We'll do it live to say.
Oh, you've still traveled. For, for Wednesday, but they should be back by Thursday. Friday morning, at eight, so we could do virtually. Friday morning, eight.
Like Friday afternoon work.
That's fine, Friday afternoon. Have a twelve to two, twelve to two. Twelve to two.
Like that, something like. Speculation.
I'm not, I'm not gonna tell that, but I can go in regularly. I, I can do virtually. But no matter what, leadership, you need to act on the legislation. But my concern then is that it holds up, because right now Kristen has to start drafting the budget. The budget has to be drawn by August fifth, which is next Wednesday. So these legislation. But that means that all the budgets have to be reckoned out, those reachings of funding count. Then O N B has to have everything in quarters form. For, and it's gonna take us two days to make sure they both match.
I, I'm comfortable everyone voting for it, that's during the direct. And then at Navi or at P S C, who's this? I mean, I just, because of the practicalities of our constitution, I agree that we should take care of it now, but. There's no idea what the numbers are.
I wanna know what your running total is at this point.
Okay, everybody's doing.
That's why you're supposed to be here, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The balance left over for every fiscal year for F I twenty five and F I twenty four.
Your closeout report?
No, the sun's down, so apparently it was not accounted correctly, so it was supposed to be, but they didn't even, but O O C and O N B didn't even know about this resolution, so the accounting is wrong.
You won't need here well to, uh, come back to junior resolution, what is?
Right? Remember what you reported for the closeout for fiscal year twenty four? Yes, I mean.
Closeout?
All right, we're gonna recess for fifteen minutes, we'll come back, but Melon, this is, we'll come back, yeah.
Good, Rob. So I'm, I'm running the numbers now, there's, there's, um. I guess back then they might have had all chapters, but I'm trying to get that number. But I guess one of the recommendations would be to have O N B set up N accounts if they're gonna keep it at agency level. That way it won't lapse, it'll actually just carry over and the, the, um. Veterans Trust could, could just keep on utilizing that same number and not have to worry about closeout schedule.
It is four thirteen PM. We do have a floor meeting. And they help nail, I think, the German immigrants as a party, also vice chairman of Congress. So your delegate left here at the budget and finance conference room. We did get clarification regarding the veterans' trust fund. And for the record, there is an available amount of. Let's see. Available balance for the veterans' trust fund is three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Per CJ five seventy twenty-three, sponsored by the vice chairman of the process itself. This amount shall be available for the components of budget. So with that discussion and clarification from OVC, OLSB, OLS, I'm going to try to voice it faster.
Thank you. So this would be a directive to ten G A N B A show up these budget forms for the veterans. Trust done this assumes to reflect the period of remuneration as provided by the controller and the O B for inclusion once every property in support.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ross, later members of the budget, there's a motion on the floor. I share so you're ready to motion second by the normative game. Do we have any questions to this record? Yeah. Okay, so Shirley, I see.
Thank you, everybody. My question would be since their original legislation, which will give you the ten days afterwards and it gets them active. And could we just do a double check to make sure from that timeline, the public is obvious when president sign this obvious in September, it probably just be a month. That we just make sure there's any funding that was still in there, even gets carried over, just so we're double checking and making sure we're following. This resolution that was passed by council. That would just be my request that we also do a double check. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Shirley Yasi. I believe Mr. Rob Willie from the office of their controller is looking into the resolution and his implementation. This really didn't state that earlier. I mean, go back to the motion priority to also respond to that question.
So you want to include it, just say, when, don't want to be another secret, they both have a floor, then report that to HSE. This is not exactly, do you understand that's the legislation or should do it here? Just N B A on U F C to update us on the, so it's carried over available at the end of that question, so.
Yeah, but Charlie said that he was going to look towards to the available early sign. We're not shocked. Rob said that. Okay, do you want to, I need to, one is trying to go to the entry question, yes, first of hand, the question we need to prepare. All right, thank you. And then so for the record, then we'll unfold over the table to take a look into that available fund balances invited and hired an additional man. And then we'll take a look at that legislation and how the resolution reads when it was happened. So maybe the other show now we. There is a budget finance committee. Does anyone else have any questions to the director? This is technically amendment number two. All right, members of the budget finance committee, you have a question second on the floor. I hear no further questions. We'll go to Rofaldo on amendment number two, which is the directive. Delegate number two, gate of screens, delegate Shirley, I see them. Delegate Shirley, I see you both screen, chairman, never pass on Friday, how you. Chairman, never pass the party votes, getting the last year, asking how you vote. The last year, asking how to stay, vice chairman of process. Vice Chairman, for I said your votes, we have five members voting in affirmative, zero opposed, myself not voting. The motion does carry. On the number two, members of the budget and finance committee, does anyone else have any questions on the station one seven five two five? So if you listen to the budget and finance committee, often they'll know that we talk about coffee cans and we really didn't find it today. About three hundred thousand dollars, so. You know, previous delegates are to vice chair across there for his legislation on the veterans' trust fund. So continue to, there's plenty of discussion about how we can improve that distribution for our citizens. But I appreciate this committee's leadership, working with Health Education Committee Services Committee. Their delegate last reality and also does it Roman debate for advocate for the eastern agency. Good value, Sharon, and also chairman, and we're kind of so proud that work with health education and services directly. In collaboration on the veterans' trust fund and also vice chairman across there who led the previous resolution to update the veterans' trust fund. So again, I do appreciate this committee's leadership amongst the council of working with the health education and services committee. To ensure that our veterans are seen and also heard. Again, there was a legislative concern today regarding their mental health services. So we'll continue to evaluate that and pass that dollar that become the that service to an hour and a potentially for the part twenty-seven budget. Members of the budget and finance committee also require a call for questions on legislation one seven five two five. Delegate Shirley, I see.
I made it safe for an amendment. I don't know. I know we were talking about all pieces of I just, I don't know. I had thought that budget and finance was going to have a separate discussion about COAs and legislative concerns. I know that Mr. Taki was taping notes and I don't know what the plan is, but I thought that all of those were going to be discussed progressively. So that's, that, that was my understanding of what's, that was going to happen. So if that's not still the plan, then I would be to know that so that I could write the, as much as I can serve, sure.
So Rob, we did working with O S P for what's happening to start reading that every time we heard that this is a legislative concern. So that, that manual is actually helping make sure everything's straight enough correctly, so we can also. But it originally, you were going to amend or drop the budget like those I've said, it sounds like. And if we should, I mean, I don't know what's ready today. What do you want there? So we're all moving together. Okay. Well, I had to give the other question counter through the, so I was hoping that we can have that discussion next Tuesday. After or before our next budget, I think it's a lot of citizens and the conditions of appropriation. Because after this budget's passed, O M E converts the numbers and then everything gets up to O L S to review and then it gets sent to O L S. So they can start drafting the components of budget additionally on the size of budget finance that's bid. If he said the obvious budget, not legislative, who sends the conditions of appropriation? So we'll have a separate leadership team to take a look at everything in comprehensive view, including the unmet needs. So everything gets compiled all together in the staff of that organization, we have a discussion about it. So that, that was hoping, okay, to have them.
Looks fine. I said, well, we have it.
Okay, yeah, I gotta take a look at our calendar again because I think we're out against deadline because the hot. Pressure on the budget, but never look, okay.
Thank you, as I was showing the Aussie for sending in that legislative concern to the office of legislative council and office of legislative services. The office of legislative services will continue to compile the legislative concerns and also the conditions of appropriation. And then O V will send over their oversight approved legislative concerns over back over to us. They're going to compile the entire list of legislative concern, conditions of appropriation and also the unmet needs list. I know that yesterday I did check with the lobby and they said they had a draft version of that and would be contingent based on the full of the proof in the veterans' budget. So they are about ninety-five percent done with that information until they receive the veteran's budget. Members of the budget finance committee final call for questions on legislation one seven five two five. All right, let's see, we'll go to the final vote with as amended, delegate number two, eight, how do you vote? Delegate number eight, in the day, what's green, delegate showing how you have a book. That would be showing how the books can show when you ever miss by Friday time, vote. Chairman, ever miss by Friday, but screens, delegate less you guys, he had a book.
Matt, chair, booking.
The last year, as you can see, and vice chairman across there. Vice Chairman Cross, there was three. We have five members voting in affirmative, zero opposed, myself not voting. The motion does carry on legislation one seven five two five. Thank you, Vice Chairman, dreams, I'm missing, thank you, Miss Holden.
Thank you.
And happy birthday, Miss Holden.
Thank you, Matt Chair. So big birthday activity.
Members of the budget and finance committee, we are back on our agenda. We have one report today on Mr. Todd. While we're preparing. To consider the reports, again, it was completed, it gave the finished five six five. Now we are holding this, we have that, now we'll be on receiving our work, so after receiving our first, you know, the works. So Mr. Todd, will you get some favor? Thank you.
That's a very standard report to that rate. No referencing to. Okay.
A little positive. Are you like to keep it here? So not even, it's a problem also for the.
Bobby, so your last list. Cigars. How much? And Mike, you just. We're squared in on this side now. I said behind you over there. Or actually, with that, the email doesn't get over the, you know.
Wanted a, a report twenty-four hours ago. All right, so what our center here, Mr. Robbie Todd. Some mystery to the hockey, I just know that this is your first year with the budget finance committee, but we do appreciate your hard work. And your diligence and efforts and assisting the committee, but not the one, but two congregant of the budget. So thank you, Mr. Todd. At this time, Mr. Todd is going to be given the report to the budget and finance committee regarding our public hearings in the month of June. With many rounds to the agencies and the three states of the nation to collect information from the public. So at this time, I'm going to give the floor over to Mr. Taki, provide the report and mark all stairs.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present on the FY twenty twenty-six comprehensive public hearing as released with our budgets. And first, I'd like to thank staff for helping me pull this off. This was my first time of doing a public hearing, so thanks to Office of Legislative Services, Council Delegates Office and Office of the Speaker in helping me. Make this successful, adding with little pickups as possible. First, I want to let you know that this public hearing before is a high level quick summary of everything that we have done. It, the transcript is still being composed right now, so there's two of them that have been completed, which is attached to the public hearing reports I currently have. Per twelve infancy sections, eight hundred and eight hundred and forty. The budget finance committee, while we're given an opportunity to hold public hearings at each of the agencies and to. Receive public testimony from the Navo people on how the budget should be developed. Throughout this entire process, the public hearing was given public notifications as well. So the public hearing was. Shared on Navo Nation Council's website as well as on social media as well as. The radio, and I know that Honorable Lester Yasi did provide recordings for those public hearings. Now, when this public hearing started, there was really nothing for me to build off of. So I started from scratch on how to create this public hearing. So I provided some guiding principles and some betting tools for us to do this public hearing. One was to indicate that this public hearing will allow the opportunity for Navo people to recommend to the committee how the navigation goes. One was to indicate that this public hearing will allow the opportunity for Navajo people to recommend to the committee how the Navajo Nation Government should prepare the fiscal year budget. The hearing um will result in a written report which you currently have in front of you and a necessary recommendation to provide um to the Navajo Nation Council if necessary. This public hearing was open to the public and provided an opportunity for everyone to sign and provide email addresses or telephone number as we will be using utilizing this information um as we generate their full report that's gonna be shared once the comprehensive budget is generated. There was a request to speak form so that we kept track of everyone who wanted to provide an opportunity to speak as well. And we also gave reasonable time for each of the public to provide public testimony in this. While in the report, it does state that no further testimony will be taken right as we completed the public hearing, it did that it did not necessarily mean that we will close um accepting public comment, as public comment can be made also through the council's website. Now, the public hearing rules was established so that we could get an understanding of how we can set this up. So when I drafted this, I did indicate that there will be committee forum, but because this is only a hearing as far as the public um budget goes, that forum would not be needed. Um I did indicate, you know, the chair and vice chair as well as the pro temp public participation on how we were gonna do this. Um and we maintained records, so this is the fun part of the maintaining the records was the fact that we had a request to speak form and each of them were numbered. So that way we got the correct names of individuals who were presenting testimony and that was when we provided the transcript, we knew how to spell their names correctly as well as where they were all in the lineup. Now, the amendments to this rules um can be amended from time to time. Um it's not set in stone and it gives an opportunity for us to improve as we develop this public hearing if we're gonna continue this. The public hearing notices were sent out and we had six dates, it was June fourth, which was held at Chechukta. June fifth, which was held at Division of Transportation, June sixth, which was held at Tubus City Judicial District, June ninth, which was held at Navajo National Wellness Center, June tenth at Nanasak Chapter, and June eleventh, which was held at the NTUA Chingle District Office. Now, of those um announcements, again, it were made throughout this process, first was on a mess, which was on the Navajo Nation Government announcements, which was email entitled um fiscal year comprehensive budget public hearing and a flyer was also generated by Office of the Speaker. Um in addition to that, as I mentioned before, they'll get less few hours, we did provide radio recordings for the public hearing and the office did utilize um legislative permission technology to post on council's website. Then on June twentieth, the final press release was issued by Office of the Speaker regarding the comprehensive budget um public hearing across all five agencies. In addition, um the Office of the Speaker did indicate a resolution template for chapters to use to utilize when submitting that there are unmet needs as far as the comprehensive budget goes. Now, the public hearing presentation at each of the public hearings, the following information was presented on how the comprehensive budget was prepared. Um the annual review projections for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the expenditure rates for the Navajo Nation Government for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as well as the current rate for twenty twenty-five, and included also the total funding base amount for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which is resolution B F A P dash twenty-one dash twenty-five. Now, we gathered um information at the public hearings and we did a questionnaire. Of those public hearing, there was a total of one hundred eighty-one attendees. There was ninety-five for um requests to speak. There was five unmet need requests, um which is exhibit E that was sent to us. There was twelve resolutions that was given to the Office of Legislative Services regarding the FY twenty twenty-six comprehensive budget. There was a six re- requests for public records, which we also completed at the time. Each of the staff was all required to bring their laptops and printers as well as extra rooms of paper and ink so that we could complete as much of the requests for public information as possible. And of those, one hundred and fourteen questionnaires were were returned. Now, of all the public hearings and the information that was gathered, the request to speak, the five test testimonies that were given, it was one was community development, two was natural resources, three was public safety, four was economic development, and five was transportation. As far as economic, as far as community development goes, the the main concern that came out of the public testimony was communication and direct services to the chapter is deficient. There was chapter need for additional funding to provide direct services. There was additional need for project managers for housing and infrastructure projects, and there was additional need for employees and allocation to chapters and its programs at the chapter level. With natural resources, there was a need for additional allocation for foreign land board and grazing officials. There was additional need for water point maintenance and repairs, there was a need for technical assistance to provide clarification offline when I work raising matters to relate to the A I F home site lease and land withdrawals and probate. When it came to public safety, there was a need for additional allocation for officers at the agencies as well as substations at the agencies. Economic development, it was examination of the business regulatory tourism and real estate fees and taxation and the need for additional allocation for the R B D O offices and for local communities to develop and regulate um legal pop-up business. Last was transportation, there was need for additional rodent and maintenance and repairs. For unmet needs, there was a total of thirty-eight million five hundred eighty thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars in unmet needs that came from the community. Of that, one was from Tito um Senior Senator. Um Sinaties Chapter. Sinasi's chapter. I don't know how to say this one in Navajo. The not the. Um again, the two chapter and Eastern Navajo Agency Council. Each of them required financial assistance for each of their programs as well as public works. Now, of the resolution, there was a total of twelve resolutions for unmet needs. And then we collected this throughout the entire public hearing, the last one I received was as of yesterday. So that's the reason why the date on this report says July twenty-ninth, as I updated this, as I was continuing to receive the projects. As this committee's wall were, this public hearing report was finished and I sent notice to the pub- um Budget Finance Committee via text message that this public hearing report was ready on July eighth. In the report, I did indicate that this report should be provided to the Budget Finance Committee at least at a minimum one week before we start with comprehensive budget process so that way you can it can help guide this but budget process that we're going through. And I'll provide an example as we continue through this project um report. So if you can see the report, the first um resolution comes from requesting from twenty to Navajo Council to Honorable Council Delegates Stephen Arviso for appropriation of a maintenance type position at one hundred twenty, uh one hundred ten chapters. There was request for um to include the personal lapse finding a total of fifteen million nine hundred nine nine thousand six hundred and ten and six million and nine hundred nine nine thousand seven hundred forty for the unreserved designated fund balances. There was a resolution from the Navajo Eastern Land Board Agency, there was a supporting resolution for the patient of internet governmental between Tisnes last chapter and Division of Agent and Long Term. Um there was a resolution from many farms on the veterans organizations and set forth. Now, part of the question, um part of the resolutions that we would receive was the questionnaires that we presented out, and this is where I believe that it should have been that um data-driven, so this is why a questionnaire was created. Of the questionnaires, eighty-nine percent of the of the age category that was given, seven percent was from the ages of eighteen to twenty-one. Three percent was from twenty-two to thirty-one. There eleven percent was from thirty-two to forty-one, thirteen percent was from forty-two to fifty-one. Twenty-four percent was from fifty-two to sixty-one and forty percent was sixty-two and above. Of those, forty-three percent were male, fifty-three, fifty-four percent were females, and one percent prefer not to say. Of those living from who primarily live off the Navajo Nation, fifty-six percent said no, thirty-six percent said yes. As far as the agency chapters goes, one hundred percent of them did answer, twenty-six percent came from eastern, eight percent came from central, thirty-eight percent came from northern, eleven percent came from western, and seventeen percent came from forty-five um agencies. Of those registered to vote at their chapter ninety-one percent answered questions, eighty-two percent indicated they are worship voters, and nine percent said no. Of those that are veterans, fifteen percent indicated that they're veterans and eighty-three percent said they're not. Regarding Blue Star Mother and Gold Star Family, four percent said that they're Blue Star Mothers and seventy-five percent said no, of the Gold Star Families, four percent said yes and fifty-four percent said no. Now, when we asked the question if they understand the comprehensive budget process, with ninety-three percent answering this question, forty-four percent said yes and forty-nine percent said no. So that gives an indication that not great, not many of the public understand this whole full comprehensive budget as we didn't exceed fifty percent. Now, to rate their knowledge on the comprehensive budget, ninety-five, seven percent of them did answer this question, fourteen percent said that we're not knowledgeable on this. Fifty-one percent said they knew little of it, twenty-seven percent said they were knowledgeable and only five percent said they were very knowledgeable regarding the comprehensive budget. Now, what were the top three priorities for direct services for funding, one hundred percent of the questionnaires were answered on this question. Seventeen percent indicated that the top percent was community development, eleven percent was health. Economic development received ten percent, veterans received eleven percent, public safety received eleven percent, social services received six percent. Education received six percent, general services reduced six percent, natural resources received four percent, Department of Justice received three percent. Human resources received six percent, transportation received five percent, E P A received three percent, intelligence communication received one percent. Now, there was a program of services you feel that was under under funded, eighty-seven percent of the public didn't answer this question, seventy-two percent said yes and fifty percent said no. According from the the number one response of those that was underfunded was public safety, veterans and communities of value. Next question was, is there a program of services you feel to see improvement, eighty-two percent answered this question, seventy-two percent said yes, ten percent said no. The number one that they still like to see improvement on was community development, public safety and veterans. Now, if there was a program that the public felt that um should be um funding should be reduced or re-corrected, seventy-one percent answered yes. Answer this question, thirty-five percent said yes and thirty percent said no. It should note that when we did this questionnaire, we did indicate to please use a list above. But that was not the case with this question. Of the question, the number one response to this question was as far as redirect or re-reduce was the executive office, the executive branch, Office of the President, Vice President, Department of Justice, and then following the Navajo Council delegates. And other programs indicate include human resources, community development, telecommunications, veterans, social services, health, judicial, general services, economic development and um education. Of this, twelve times was the executive branch indicated. Three times was the Justice Department indicated and three times was Navajo Nation Council indicated. Now, the question regarding should the Navajo Nation Government allocate additional funds towards emergency preparedness and response, ninety percent of the questions answered. Ninety-one percent said yes, seven percent said no. Um regarding this question on if the Navajo Nation Government is transparent in how it spends Navajo Nation funds, eighty-four percent answered this question. Twenty-two percent said yes and sixty-two percent said no, so it gives a good indication that the public doesn't feel that they're well informed of how the Navajo Nation Government spends its funds. Regarding questions on higher community, fully benefited from COVID, our nineteen eighty-three percent said yes, so eight, seven, thirty-three percent indicated that they benefited from the COVID or ARBIT funds and fifty percent said no. Regarding then the extraction resources, natural resources extraction of this question, regarding whether or not we support it as far as generating revenue, seventy-nine percent answered this question, three-nine percent said yes, they supported, and thirty-two percent said no, with eight percent that were uncertain and only indicated certain types. They indicated oil, coal, helium, hydrogen, gobble pits and existing extractions. Um answering the questions, did he answer no above regarding whether or not he supported, would you support um if the community receives shares of royalty lease payments or taxation from the project, forty-four percent of the questionnaires answered this question. Thirty-three, thirty percent indicated that that yes, they would believe they would approve of it and fourteen percent said no. Now, questions, if you still answered no above on the supporting of natural resource extraction, Navajo Nation Government set aside direct funding from the project to support the problem we need, seventy percent answered this question, nine percent believe that it should go to food assistance for family. Eighteen percent believes that housing and home repairs assistance is important, thirteen percent said education assistance. Eighteen percent believes it's infrastructure such as road and waters projects. Ten percent wants workforce development and only eight percent wants E P A protections and cleanup. Now, what heads the policies and programs do you believe that as a source of generally or presenting revenue for free channelings and government, which we did indicate to to select your top three, a hundred percent of the community answered this question. Of that, twenty-two percent believe that manufacturing and industrial jobs creation that was factories was important. Twenty-one, we believe that solar energy development, seventy percent believe increasing Navajo Nation funds for public water points such as windmills. Thirteen percent believe that energy, wind energy development, twelve percent believe in limiting grazing permits ability to intervene in development projects. Eleven percent believe in expanding and maintaining the rights of grazing permits and four percent believe in limiting or maintaining Navajo Nation funds for water projects, water point projects. Now, throughout this entire process, um I kept track of all the um conditions or appropriations and legislative concerns that was raised during the public hearings. There was six held public hearings and then the committee noticed several conditions of appropriation of legislative concerns and they are, one, the use of the junk food tax for chapter usage as it relates to offsetting farming and farming fuel costs, that clarification needs to be uh made. Two was the Division of Natural Resources and the community wellness or collecting data on direct services as it relates to water land extensions and water point operation and maintenance. Three, Division of Health needs to comply with federal funding as it relates to working directly with the Navajo Nation Council on aging and how often both party meet. Four, the impact of the pay wage study for the Navajo Nation Government employees to be presented by Division on Human Resources, and the fifth one is the usage of the veteran funds allocation which are held by the chapters for veteran organizations to use as they see fit, the clarification needs to be made. Uh next step on this is that all the public hearing testimonies, which includes a transcripts, resolution and written comments will be given to the Office of Legislative Services Tracking System to be uploaded to the Internet Public Review Summary when the fiscal year twenty twenty-six comprehensive budget for the Navajo Nation Government is introduced and undergoes the five-day comic period. This will ensure that those who attended and participated in the committee's public hearing on the comprehensive budgets, voices will be heard and recorded for the official record. In addition, it will demonstrate that the committee by by twelve in N C sections eight hundred and eight hundred forty A by holy public hearing at each agency's taking testimonies on the budget and to plan for adequate funding for services desired by the Navajo people, including revision and and menus for public facilities. So as I've indicated before, the the reason I wanted to present this a week before we started the comprehensive budget or was was started looking at the budgets of the divisions is one of the recommendations which I did take out, which this committee did complete was fully funding the chapters. As that was one of the number one concerns raised in the public as well as by the questionnaires itself. And that's what this committee did, you guys fully funded all one hundred and ten chapters as well as the personnel for that and you did find two point one million dollars in order to do it. So that was already completed, which was one of the recommendations in this report, which I did take out as you guys did comply with it. So as right, as of now, only two of the testimonies have been transcribed, which is from uh well, they combined the valley, which the the Wellness Center and the Tubus City, which is part of your package. So you can see the transcript or data and we have four more to complete, which will be hopefully completed by the time the comprehensive budget is introduced, as we can upload all of this information as well as all the resolutions and and that needs taken, so that we, the Navajo Nation Council and your colleagues and the publisher can see what we've generated over the force of the six public hearings that was held by the Budget Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Taki, for your report to the Budget and Finance Committee, members of the committees are motion to accept the word. Motion, Vice Chairman, in our method, how do you accept? Second, by Vice Chairman Cross there. Members of the Budget and Finance Committee, are there any questions, comments? All right. Right, when I go to Vice Chairman Cross there and I'm gonna show them.
I was waiting, did you email this or?
Oh, I just later know I did not email this, I will email this once um I'm completed with this report.
All right, Mr. Taki, I'm here with the chairman.
Yeah, thank you, she's very fortunate.
Yeah, thank you. She's very fortunate. The staff and yourself did an amazing job. I think every year we're just gonna be better and appreciate your questionnaire. I know my hope was that officer government development would be helpful. Always thinking about something that indicates and in terms of how in fact Navajo Government Development is participating in these discussions here, rightly from the people, especially where it comes to the budget, the functions, and why it's important for the average Navajo citizen to really understand their needs. Know how these regulations come in, how management is handling with the policies. And going back to, in the future, hopefully we can increase our percentage of direct service. And right now we use about, what is it, fifty percent, pointing to our audit, goes into personnel. We're general friends, so the board doesn't feel like they're getting a benefit. There should be some weight or measures and how would that be said in the future. So saying that, so the committee did fund the chapters, whether another high value feedback that you heard throughout the public hearings that we should consider as we move forward with the unmet needs or in stressing with the three branch chiefs, as all three of them pointing to the preparation happen. For me, it's just a bit, they should create my policy priorities. I really haven't seen that. So I just wanted to convince other people, how can we make those recommendations, so that the three branch chiefs incorporate with what we're hearing, for we need feedback from the people. Thank you, Chairman Knesser.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Chairman Amber Knesser. Thank you, Mr. Totti, for collecting information and working with the team here at the Legislative Branch. Me, also, members of the Budget Finance Committee, it was a great time for us to continue. We can a part of our future leadership meeting regarding the legislative concerns, conditions of appropriation and unmet needs. I also like the Controller to present to the committee on the budget actual and that percentage of operating dollars to personnel dollars in the last fiscal year. The Controller is working on a report to show how much money is unspent in personnel, but also how much money is unspent in operating. All be done with the object of, so we can take a deeper look at on how much special transaction money gets spent, and vice versa. And some of that information can be documented as either over expenditures or deficits because of budget revisions. So when the controller is complete with that report, it would be helpful to those discussions too on how we can improve our budgeting process. And so I, I think you should chairman Amber Knesser for your statements. Members of the committee, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you for this report from the negotiating where we need to really work on a lot of areas. They have, one I have looked at is the comprehensive budget process. And just by my observations for this year, I know it's going to be budget, how they're turning it into us is also different. So I think that really does require some type of SOP. So everybody's on the same page, submitting their documents the same. And I don't know whose job it is to put those kind of trainings, workshops, all of that together. I just feel like that would be really important because even at the community level, you know, as we, a lot of our, our people are saying, you know, that's the people's money. But they also need to know where it comes from and how it funnels through, it goes through the whole process to get to whatever project or service that Navajo Nation is bringing up. So I think that, you know, fifty one percent of those have little knowledge about how this budget process works. That needs to be highlighted. Even, I think in the future, our incoming delegates or elected officials at the chapter level, they also need to understand this because I think this new transition, new chapter officials who are figuring, instead of my chapter officials are needed to Navajo Nation. If they're in in politics or in this, in these areas, they have attend to chapter meetings, but you're just kind of listening to them. They also want to know a lot about the budget process. So I think it's important that, you know, we figure out as a committee or somebody somewhere, and we are needs to come up with some type of standard, a procedure. The other one I found interesting in their part is question looks like eleven or twelve. You know, that is there be program and service you feel underfunded? And then what needs to be improved? It's like the same thing around public safety, veterans, and community development. And what needs to be improved in community development, public safety, and veterans. And, you know, I mean, it really does. I think we need to really, as a committee, sit down possibly and figure out what's going on with those programs. Because they're telling us that these programs are underfunded, and where do we need to improve? So that was, this is a good report that I did. I'm not sure, like, next page over, we have the extraction, natural resource extraction. I noticed that more than had the most individuals who were support of extraction. And so I don't know how execute these numbers, but and I also don't know where these three sets of questions would be going or towards in the future. That would just be kind of something I would put a red flag on or stick a pin and come back to it later. But that was good, just to kind of see that highlighted here. So, good job to, to you and also those that helped out. And also making for those that also participated in these events. It really is important that you you know, in some way, comment, you know, show up at your chapter meeting, comment on legislation. That's the only way we hear your voice and also you become a part of the legislative process. So, good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Delegate Sharon Nancy, members of the Budget Finance Committee. I do appreciate everyone's time on the public hearings. Perhaps maybe this is a time I, I have a big and operative comments on reflection of the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty six comprehensive budget. But I think this brings us to the process of the public hearings. And I hope that we can incorporate this method into the discussion already, the permanent trustment that it comes, because that does impact the comprehensive budget as well. And there are some some of these needs out there, but this has been a great starting point to that discussion. So, thank you all. Members of the committee visiting the house, want to offer comments or questions? Alright, delegate, love you guys. Do you have any comments or questions?
Alright, those are great recommendations. We need to improve the education on the budget process. In the past, and the Office of Management and Budget has participated in the public hearings this year, they are unavailable, but I hope that we can continue to incorporate that aspect of education. The Controller did a part in the education this year, so we do appreciate the Controller traveling with us and being with us throughout the process. I know that the community, the public, the Navajo people didn't appreciate the Controller was there to inform them on the revenues. So again, I think the Controller would be there was committee, any last questions or comments on their work today? Mr. Totti, any specific statements? That's, he's a different chair right now, so. Alright, members of the committee, let's go to our report on the three reports today. So Chairman Knesser, what's three? Chairman Nancy, what's three?
Three.
Chairman Nancy, what's three? Chairman Professor Knesser, what's three?
Couple of grand. It wasn't red pack, no.
Chairman Nancy, what's three? Vice Chairman Crosshair, anything? We have five members voting in the room, there's your host, myself, I'm voting for the motion to this chair. Thank you, Mr. Totti. And thank you to the team, the Office of Legislative Services, Office of Legislative Council, also O B to the Controller, and to the Council Delegates Office, to the Office of Speaker, first to sing for the public chair. Members of the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Totti, when you're ready to send that report out, could you sign our preferably, it will be by Friday, or today, that's ready. That'd be helpful. Thank you. Okay, members of the committee, I have closed the meeting. I have one announcement regarding the comprehensive budget calendars. I did I, I'm being considerate of the Controller's timeframe and the audit, and also the Office of Management and Budget's work on the comprehensive budget thus far. The proposed calendar is as close as we can get to the original calendar. I don't have a paper in front of me. But essentially, our target to drop the legislation is by next Wednesday. So in the meantime, O B and O C work together, and I will keep everyone apprised of that. I will share with the committee the proposed Budget and Finance Committee meetings. So far, they are they are at the planned for Tuesday, so it doesn't compete on our original status. So, those who have the announcement. Members of the committee, is there a motion for your Just your opposite, so we're all seeing. Okay, if I tell you to turn on the house, you go adjourn, give us seconds. Second, by the other department, the gay?
Yes, sir.
Members of the committee, we're going to record the motion for adjournment. So like a chairman, I think, any book? I like it, Sharon Nancy, what's three? Everyone ever asked me, what's three? The last three, what's three? Vice Chairman Crosshair, any book? Vice Chairman Crosshair, what's three? Okay, five members voting in for the motion, not voting in motion, carry, we're adjourned at five oh three P M. Thank you all. Thank you, that includes another step of the comprehensive budget. So on to the draft. Thank you all.